We can go ahead and do the pledge and then we'll just jump right into the work session. So Director Jones, you want to kick us off?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, well, we have our official board retreat. We did one a year and a half or so ago, I think, when we all first got on the board. So this is always a good time to get a retreat done when you have new board members. So for those of you that decided you would like to join us this evening, welcome. So Board, we do have food for dinner. Are you hungry now and want to go get food? Or do you want to take a break in a little bit and then get food? We're kind of trying to think logistically what... It'll stay warm, so Angela made her famous enchiladas. Well, they're famous right now. Because that's the only thing we have to eat right now. You guys want to break in a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, sounds good. Alright, so we have George. Well, I guess you guys are tag teaming it, right? Okay, well then, why don't you guys come on up and we're going to... Our board goals facilitation. Yeah, maybe introduce yourselves. We're recording it. We're not live streaming it, so just maybe introduce yourselves for those who are listening.
Thank you, Alex Carter, vice head of field of facilitation at CEI.
George Welsh.
Yep, you're Tom.
Nice working, yay. I am senior partner at CEI. I'll let you determine what that must mean.
Alright, and I'm actually going to turn things over to George for the first little bit. But I'm going to start us with something that CEI always does when we get to work with your people and everyone else. It's called a stoke, which gets us started thinking about the day and setting a mindset for the work that we're going to do today. So here's the prompt. You guys are going to talk together, maybe the two of you could talk, the two of you could talk, the two of you could talk. And the prompt is, and we'll turn off our mics, because this is just for you guys to share, really quickly, one minute, your best road trip ever. That's the prompt. Go. Alright.
So when Stefan graduated from high school, he was a year away from my brother in high school. We took an amazing summer road trip, nine days.
Oh my gosh.
Nine baseball events included Wrigley Field, Yankee Stadium, Fenway Park, Baseball Hall of Fame, Field of Dreams, Cooperstown, and we vagabonded. It was like a Suzuki XL7.
Love it.
There was futon mattress in the back.
Love it.
I hung up a hammock every night. About every third night, stopped in the shower.
Right, oh, this sounds great.
And when we were done, we were like, and it's funny, we both have boys, a two-year-old grandson, I'm thinking of six-month-old grandson, we're like guaranteeing to be out when Connor graduated.
Slightly nicer to compare that, maybe. That's awesome.
Mine, I'm telling you, it was a road trip. It was far my greatest road trip, but it also started really weird. It was impromptu, because today's Mardi Gras, did you know that?
Okay, sure.
It was an impromptu trip to New Orleans during college.
Oh wow, okay.
Trip to, like, when I say impromptu...
During COVID.
No, 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 this is when I was in college. Yeah, we showed up after doing the ski PE at Mastinutens, the little tiny bump in the hill. And my buddy and I were drinking beer, and I was like, you know what, this is like the greatest party in the world.
At Tuesday.
We're 12 hours away. We could be in Mardi Gras, we could be there by then all morning, and he was like, are you serious? And so that was the beginning of our road trip.
Alright, you've got about 30 seconds to wrap up your story. Alright, so now that we're back on mic, you don't have to tell any of the details of your story, but I'm just going to ask everyone to report, like, what was the destination? Board member Everson.
For me or for him?
For you.
We were in Alaska.
Fantastic, and where were you going?
We went to the Gulf, or the, like, down in the peninsula. So we went from, like, Aliaska and down to the peninsula and around.
Yes, the Kenai.
Yes, Kenai Peninsula.
Board member Jones.
Oregon.
Oregon, alright.
We took off from Colorado and did a big round trip, Yosemite, San Francisco, up the coast, over to Seattle, and then came, just went a whole round.
That sounds wonderful.
It was super fun.
Was that same one?
Yeah.
My road trip was actually in Ireland, so I had to fly to get to the road trip. But I had my parents in the backseat and my best friend in the passenger seat. And I only had to threaten to throw my dad out of the car twice, so it was good. And we did kind of the whole island.
Great.
Our trip was, we went from Colorado to Seattle, but we went the other way to Idaho, then we went to Montana, did all that, back to Seattle, and then came down to California and then came back.
So they did the opposite trip, that's excellent.
So the one I shared was when we lived in Texas. It was a trip to Colorado, but we went through New Mexico, then we did Pagosa Springs, then we went out towards Moab, did Arches, then Glenwood, then the Front Range, and then back down to Texas. But that was the first time we'd ever driven through Grand Junction, we'd never heard of, or I hadn't at least. And then I was telling Jose Luis a year later, the assistant soup job popped up, and I was like, I think that's that town we drove through. And then we ended up moving here, so we wouldn't have actually known the town if we hadn't been on that road trip, which was cool.
That's a great story. That one has a happy ending.
I did a cross-country baseball landmarks trip with my two sons. One had just graduated from high school, and the other was going to be a senior. And we vagabonded it. It was like literally living out of a car, so it was cool.
The one that I, the reason I told this story is that my trip was an impromptu trip to New Orleans for Mardi Gras when I was in college. We were, it was Thursday afternoon, we had just done ski PE, and I said to my friend, you know, there's the best party in the world that's happening about 14 hours from here. And he looked at me, he said, are you serious? And I said, yeah, I think I am. And an hour later, we packed up, but on our way out, this was, it was, like, this conversation started at 11:00 PM. So by midnight, we went back to, we packed my stuff, we went to his place, packed up his stuff. And one of our friends, who was living in the same house as my road trip fellow mate, had been overserved, and we said, we're going to New Orleans. And he said, I'm in. So we all three got in the car. He promptly fell asleep in the backseat. And eight hours later, when he woke up, he said, where are we? And we said, we just crossed into Mississippi. And he said, I don't want to be here. Unequivocally, he did not want to be on that trip. So it made me think about what we're doing tonight. I think every great road trip...
We don't want to be here.
No, 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 because we're going on a great road trip. You guys all told the happy road trip, that's what we're going. Every great road trip, you have to have baseline norms and agreements, right? We have to, like, he did not feel good about the way he was recruited onto this trip, because he felt like it wasn't fair. So you have to have some common, like, norms and agreements on how we're going to behave with one another. Like, he didn't know that the reason we wanted a third person is to split the gas three ways. So he didn't like his role. So we have to agree on roles and responsibilities to have a good... That's right, that is better. And then finally, you have to want to go where you're going. You have to have a strategic vision for where you're going. All of you described trips where you knew where you were going and you were excited to be on that trip together. So today, George is going to take us through norms and agreements and roles and responsibilities, and then I'm going to, I'm going to go back there. And then when you're done with him, I'm going to come up here and we're going to go back through our strategic direction. So it's kind of a cool road trip we're about to go on for the next hour and a half, so I'm out of here.
Alright, so which one of us is the one that doesn't want to be in the car is my question right now. So just once again, my name is George Welsh, and this retreat has actually lasted five hours longer, maybe more, than advertised, because I had the pleasure of meeting with each of you individually, digitally. And so my hope is that real soon, I'm going to put your words right in front of you in a way that you can feel comfortable with, and you can all get a thumbs up to that, yeah, that's the way I want to operate. And I've got three major goals tonight with you, and I'm going to, and you have documents, by the way, but I'm going to show you, show on the screen what, the answers to your questions about how you'd like to operate as governance team. I'm then going to turn your attention to the Venn diagram over here, where we're going to talk about actually being a little bit more clear about the superintendent's role, the board's role, and those shared responsibilities that you have. And then you might remember in each of your interviews, I had a few last questions, and that was really about your hopes and dreams for this governance team and for the district as a whole. And outside of your strategic plan, what's your vision or your mission as a governance team? And I want to share that information back with you. Anywhere along the way that we touch on this, if you say, hey, I don't like that language, or I would like to change this, or, and I hope not, because I was, I think I was actually doing this work during the Super Bowl, and that was kind of interesting, but if there's like a typo or whatever, be happy to go ahead and make sure we fix that. But ultimately, at the end, the question is what you want to do, what next steps you want to take with this work, or what you want to do with what has been handed to you in terms of following it or committing to the promises. So on the screen, I have what you have on one of the documents that were prepared for you. And the very first thing I did was, based on our conversations, was define your governance team, and sort of some values within it, if you can see. So the team consists of five elected board directors working collaboratively with the superintendent of schools, each adhering to their defined roles, though I'm not sure everyone knows what those are yet, and we will get closer there tonight, respecting each other's opinions, acting as a team, and relying on the superintendent, administration, and staff to provide information and expertise to drive the district or its vision. Does that sound like what you guys were telling me, that this is sort of what you're in for? I've, I heard so much language about, you know, we make decisions, what we want to happen, the how sort of happens over here with the superintendent of schools and the staff. We then talked about communications expectations, and the first line to me is the most important line. And in traveling around the state and working with a lot of different boards, when the first line is not adhered to, that is when you have problems on boards. And this is that communication within the governance team shall always include the entire governance team, okay? That means nobody's ever left out of the loop, okay? You okay with that? At any point where I'm saying something that you don't feel like you verbalized to me, or maybe I led you toward in some instances, because I knew what some other folks were saying on the team, I want you to speak up. We had a discussion about just the happenstance of living in a community and being on a board. At some point, you're going to be in the same room. It can be a social event, it can be a school event. There will be times you're with the superintendent, or some of you are with each other. And so we spoke to that. And what I say, to ensure open and honest discourse, there's an expectation of confidentiality when board directors and the superintendent, between board directors and the superintendent, when communication not subject to Colorado Sunshine Act takes place. What's communication not subject to Colorado Sunshine Act? When you're not making decisions, you know? The way I view this is if you're saying, this is the kind of information I need before we make that decision, that's not a problem. You're not making a decision, you're seeking information. You're not to go around counting votes, you all understand that. We took this to the next level, away from the superintendent, that if you're sitting in the stands watching Will coach a team, and you're having a conversation with another board member about something coming up on, that the board's going to have to deal with, that the district's going to have to deal with, and you're not counting votes, the answer to this, in this next paragraph says, in such instances and knowing that on occasion a board director may find themselves in the presence of another director and may discuss district matters, to build trust, it's agreed, such conversations will remain confidential. Knowing transparent deliberation will take place in a public meeting, giving each board director the opportunity to speak for themselves. I kind of heard two things here. That's not my job, so it's not Angela's job to speak for Andrea. Every one of you said that, right? That if you speak to someone on the board about what they're thinking about, something that the district's dealing with, that that can just be their thinking out loud process, you leave it with them. They may change their mind by the time it shows up in this room, and you talk about it and you vote on it, and whatever they want to say, they have the opportunity to say it then. Not your job to do it for them. That's basically the message. Are you comfortable with that message as far as working together? I see the heads nodding. Hey, I'm like two for two here, that's good. So this is about communication with the superintendent. Superintendent will provide weekly updates to the entire community. Everyone said that Dr. Hill's already doing that, and it's very much appreciated, and it's very much appreciated that you get it directly the same as everyone else. So that's about regarding matters of importance to the district. However, every one of you agree that there's sometimes you got to know things that the rest of the district doesn't know, right? That starts in paragraph two. Superintendent will also provide occasional board notification messages to directors. Did I get the language right on that? Someone said we call them board notifications.
So, so board responses are when, like, there was two that went out today, so that's when I get a question from a board member, and then I go get the answer and then send it out to all five. So those are board responses. Board notifications are if it's an emergency message, or maybe it's a personnel matter that the board needs to know about, something they need to know about pretty quickly, those are notifications. And then the updates, we do the Friday update to the whole community, so.
What I'll do is I'll make the language more clear and the definition of that a little bit more clear before sending this document back to you. I like the difference. One is, a question's been, what I'm hearing, a question's been asked to Dr. Hill, and maybe Jose Luis asked the question. Dr. Hill's strategy is, which I love, is that he sends the question back to everyone with the answer. So you're keeping everyone in the loop. Just because Jose Luis had that question doesn't mean everyone else might not have had it, nor that they wouldn't have wanted to know the answer, okay? Then the board notification piece is really more about something that comes up that the board needs to have the heads up about, right? So let me finish that other, with the aim of answering questions from individual directors addressing specific situations that have arisen and preparing directors for upcoming meeting action items. So Brian, it sounds like I'm going to break up board notification being addressing specific situations that have arisen, and the board response is addressing questions, right? Great. But once again, it's understood the entire board will receive the same information, leaving no member out of the loop, reiterated, right? Dr. Hill's not going to just play with two of you, three of you, and you're not going to do that within the group. And I'm, I hope this sounds like common sense to you, but I've got to tell you, it's not necessarily around the state. And what I got to tell I love about each one of you is that as we discuss these things, this is where y'all leaned, you know, that everyone's got to be part of the process, and everyone's got to be informed, and everyone's got to get the information they need. We put responsibility on your board, Dr. Hill. Each director will faithfully read these messages and circle back to the superintendent and the rest of the board for clarification if needed. So Dr. Hill sends you out a board notification about something he feels you need to know that's not going out to the general public. You got a question, your question should include everyone. Not subject, well, it's, it's subject to the Open Records Act is what I'm going to tell you. And if you're worried about that, why would you be worried about that? Because if someone requests it, what they're going to catch this board doing, and it would really be horrible to do that, they're going to catch you working. They're going to catch you seeking information and understanding, and that's an okay thing. Sometimes an Open Records Act request can be a good thing for you, okay? That last part, when appropriate, the superintendent will refer directors to staff members. They can contact for more detailed information. I don't typically put this in a set of norms, but everyone kind of felt like this is the way it works, and that Dr. Hill's been doing that already, right?
Yeah, we've talked about that. I think senior leadership level, I'm comfortable and confident that they can ask any questions of them. And I think I've shared this with you before, my old, my superintendent Austin had a different philosophy. It was everything goes through the superintendent. And it was actually Jeffco superintendent, why am I drawing a blank on her name right now?
Sidney Stevens.
Tracy. She was the one that shared with me a while back. She goes, I actually, I think it hinders progress if you have to have everything go through superintendent. So she's like, I trust my senior leadership, they can go to them, and I feel the same way. So yeah, if board members have questions for any of the senior leadership members, I'm fine with them emailing questions.
As long as Dr. Hill's comfortable with that, I'm really comfortable with that, because... And what the language I heard from the board was, he surrounded himself with an excellent staff that can address our questions and inquiries. Good with that?
Yeah, I think the one thing, when I usually ask senior leadership a question for the most, I, there's times I forget, but I always try to CC Dr. Hill on it, so that, one, it just keeps him in the loop when I'm asking a question of senior leadership, to just make sure he knows, you know, sometimes if the conversation progresses on, you know, then I can just talk with one of them. But, but I do want him to be aware of, you know, the questions that, you know, that I'm asking. So I always CC him when I do ask senior leadership a question.
And what I would do is I would encourage you, always do that at the front end, so that he knows it's happening. My bet is he's got a trusting enough relationship with his directors, though, where they're going to, on the backend, let them know that these things are happening. We spoke to the superintendent and board president, having that special relationship, meeting on a weekly basis for the purpose of planning future board meeting agendas. That is not unusual in the state of Colorado. I think the best functioning boards have superintendent-president relationship, and where they do that more often. But there was also an indication that it's happening and a desire that it would continue happening. It says, to further develop relationships and lines of communication, the superintendent will meet individually with all other board directors approximately once a month. Does that sound like what's been going on? Okay. Would you like me to say twice a month?
I left it up to y'all, so I think the board president, makes sense that we're meeting once a week, but I've opened it up to, and I think everybody else has requested twice or every two weeks, and I'm great with that, so.
It doesn't always happen.
Yeah.
So I think as long as it's at least once a month.
Yeah.
At least once a month would be good language. I like that. I was going to go there, but I wasn't sure. And I want you to know, it's all your fault, because I was showing you my notes as I was typing them. Pushed the responsibility off, right? You guys were great. Except for Will. Will scared me. He might have been on a phone in a car. But I do believe he pulled off the road, though. Yeah, so, "Request for information from board directors shall throw the superintendent of schools and the board president." The idea here is that in your role as a board member and toward making decisions that, about items that are ultimately going to be on the agenda, if Jose Luis says, I need to have this information, this spreadsheet, this budget stuff, whatever, this data, it'd be nice if it goes through Andrea and Dr. Hill, and then they decide how that information gets back to Jose Luis, okay? Generally, I heard that keeping the board president in the loop about individual board member requests would be a pretty good idea. And my, it sounded like Andrea would be very likely to share that information with everyone. If the information's good for Jose Luis in making a decision, it's good for everyone, okay? And it says, "In responses to such requests shall be shared among the entire governance team in a timely manner." Feeling okay about that? Andrea, is that too much work for you?
No, it's, it works really well. Since Dr. Hill and I actually do meet once a week, a lot of times we're touching base on those things, because if it's something I don't have access to, and sometimes I might be able to reply more quickly with something that Dr. Hill and I've spoken with than he will, because he's, he's got a busier schedule. So I think tag teaming, that works really well. And, and it helps me know from a board standpoint how to support the other board members. So if we need to get something on an agenda item, because we also, I meet with Dr. Hill to set up our agendas, so that way then, we, I can, we can know how to plan out how we need to do our work sessions and our business meetings, so. No, it's not too much, I think.
Great, great.
The communication piece, it's really good.
Wonderful, wonderful. And once again, as you sort of become the pulse of the board, and you're able to make sure that everyone's getting the same information. Prior to or during board meetings, if it pertains to the agenda, all board directors are welcome to ask for clarifying information regarding action items they have been asked to vote on. This has two messages. Don't pull up stuff out of thin air during a board meeting if it's not on the agenda. There are all kinds of processes in here for you to ask for information that don't pertain to something that's on the agenda. However, if you're being asked to vote on something, to take action on something, you have the right to request for that information. Better practice is to read the agenda ahead of time and ask ahead of time, so people are then not running around scrambling to get that information for you during the meeting before you vote, right? Does that sound okay?
Yeah, and I would say Amy's been really good about, we do, so VP Jones and President Hites and myself and Amy, we meet the Wednesday after board meetings to plan the agenda for the two weeks later. And then Amy sends the draft agenda out to the board right after that. So they have almost two weeks to ask questions about the agenda, the draft agenda, and then materials, Amy tries to get out to the board no later than the Friday before the board meeting. So yeah, so I guess if a board member ever says, well, I don't, I have questions about an agenda item, there's the draft agenda opportunity, and then there's when the actual agenda materials go out on the Friday before.
So, and so let me set up a scenario where, where that particular norm could be pretty helpful. When you start having discussion as a board before you're ready to vote, discussion may bring about questions that you didn't think to ask when you first saw the item on the agenda. And, and here's my advice to you, is I challenge you to consider how many things that are on a board agenda are things you have to vote on tonight? Because if you have questions, and you're maybe going to vote against it because your questions aren't answered, it's better to tap the brakes, ask the questions, and say, maybe can we get this information? And we got another meeting in two weeks, we can come back and finish this agenda item. There are very few, like budgets are due at a certain time, there are certain things that have to be done in a calendar amount of time, but there are some decisions that you can always wait a couple of weeks.
Well, and I feel like we've gotten better, it's not perfect, but we've gotten better about trying to put things on board work session agendas that would be voted on two weeks later at a business meeting. So we try not to bring something the night of that would need to be voted on. We've had a couple of times where that's had to happen, but we try not to do that.
Not accusing you of anything, Dr. Hill. I just want, I just want the board to feel empowered if they're curious to ask, and that, and that if it can't be answered in a timely fashion, that you can slow things down, get your answers before voting, right? Regarding emergency communication, a district emergency is defined as a life-altering crisis or matter of emergency that develops quickly and requires the full attention of the superintendent. Dr. Hill, what everyone said was, the first thing we want the superintendent to do is to deal with the emergency, to make sure the staff within the system's dealing with the emergency, right? But when one happens, other than people trying to reach out to the superintendent and other employees in the district, everyone these folks know are going to be trying to reach out to them to get information about what's going on. So the board understands the superintendent will first focus on the emergency, but then contact the entire board and the preferences via text. Sounds like that happens once in a while already. As soon as possible to explain the nature of the emergency, okay? The reason why it says text is, and once again, can it be an open records request? Absolutely. And what will it show? Is your superintendent's informing the board about an emergency, and that looks like you're a great board, if you ask me, as long as you're not doing silly things with that. The request was not emailed, because everyone says they're not as responsive to that, okay? So it goes past this now. If the superintendent does not have time to send a message, they'll contact the board president. So, Dr. Hill, things are going fast, and you really don't have time to craft the right message, you can just call, Hates on, President Hates on your, Heights, is it? President Hites on your, on your phone, and you can explain to her, and now the ball's in her court. She'll pass information on to the rest of the board, because once again, they're going to be peppered. Their community leaders are going to be peppered with requests about what's going on, okay? Okay? This communication will be as factual and concise as possible and in such circumstances, the superintendent is free to refer board directors to staff members who can provide more detailed information. And of course, my understanding is you have a PIO and that's gonna actually come into play here. Okay? Following emergencies and only when time allows, a superintendent will contact each board director individually by phone or as a group in writing to explain the situation in detail. When you have time to write the email that says, here's what happened, here's what we know, here's what we did, if you've got any questions, here's who you can contact. Right? And then we also spoke about sometimes there's emergencies and sometimes there's something not quite an emergency. We call that heads up communication. Things that fall that lie somewhere between routine and emergency. When such communication is necessary, the superintendent will reach out to the entire board via a group text as soon as possible, not waiting for your your weekly update or that board responses piece that you might put out, things like that. This is out of the ordinary cycle, nor would it be the one that you do out to that whole community. Okay? Maybe not so relevant to you with what with the fact that you do those board notifications, but the idea was that something we understand some things are less than emergency and we're willing to have you take the time and get the full message to all of us. Okay? Are we still feeling okay about this stuff?
Sounds like a week or a normal week. Maybe not with all the emergencies, but the communication pieces are all yes, exactly the way that it's lining up. So it's good.
Here's the best way to create norms is you're just codifying what you're doing. And and it seems to me like there's been some good habits formed on this board and with your leader. And so what you're doing is, hey, this is the way we do it and I kind of like the way we do it, so let's put it in writing. And the good thing is now as you guys cycle out and other people cycle in, this is the kind of thing you can revisit and and help get them on on board with the norms. Okay? You never have to deal with the media, do you? So when general inquiries about district business are made by media outlets. Awesome. Awesome.
We love our media.
Well, so what I want you to know, Dr. Hill, is all of these folks first point to you, understanding that you're gonna use your PIO to make sure that this all works. Okay? But none of them, none of them said, and this is very healthy, none of them said, well, someone should speak for the board when it's like there was a bus in an accident or a pipe bust in a school and you couldn't open on time, thing like that. Right? So it says, board directors agree to defer to the superintendent who will rely on the district's public information order officer and other district staff for expert support when such communication with the media takes place. However, the board does recognize there might be good reason for the the board to actually address the media and they understand they have a right. And I feel like everyone expressed that they wanted to do this responsibly and that if that no individual speaks on behalf of the board ultimately, that the board president does. But the board president doesn't do so without first conferring with the board and getting agreement from the board that that's a good message to put out. Right? Now, that's different from when there's a three to two vote or a four to one vote on an item and the press is in the audience and let's just pick on Will and they after the meeting, they come to Will and they say, hey, Mr. Jones, Vice President Jones, why did you vote no on that agenda item? You're in a spot. The discussion we had is you don't have to respond immediately, but obviously you have the right to because and better yet, if you did vote no, if it was a four to one decision, you would have explained that and could have maybe refer the the person from the press to what you said during the meeting. But but I also heard that you guys would like to have access to the PIO when things like that happen to where you they can help you understand how to handle such approaches and craft that message. That make sense? And so that's what that second paragraph here ultimately says. So it's recognize that on occasion, individual board directors will be asked to comment on their position regarding agenda items. When asked to do so, individual directors will seek advice and support from the PIO as they craft their response. We all want to make the press's job easier, you know, by responding to them when they have requests, but there's nothing wrong with saying, I'd like to circle back to you tomorrow and answer that question. You have the right to think it through and put the response out. You just gotta know how you feel about that. Okay? You got something to say there, Will? Okay.
Well, I think keeping Callie, our PIO in the loop, because I know early on, we would get your phone numbers out there after your campaign. So and you are getting addressed by the you're contacted by the press. And one thing we were realizing is that our communications team didn't always know who was always wanting to talk to the board and about what. And so we've we've worked towards having all those requests go through Callie so that she can then help or funnel those things through us. It doesn't happen every time, but I would say we it's it's worked out better since we first started because then if we have to go get more information in order to answer the question, then she can help us with that or or we can, you know, call Dr. Hill. So anyways, we we just it's nice to always have a choke point when it comes to those to make sure that you just you have all your facts straight when it comes to the question or whatever else it might be. But but we have had instances, like you just said, where we had some split votes and and they wanted to interview board members on either side of of those options and and board members spoke to that. So
Yeah. And I'm not saying you can't.
Right.
I'm saying that there's nothing wrong with being extremely reflective and thoughtful about your answer. And here's what I hear you saying, President Heights, is there's two things going on there. It's really nice if you would all if there was a share point with and and what's this person's name and position?
Callie Burksen. Yeah, she's not here this evening, but she's our she's our PIO. Callie.
Okay. And so if you're letting her know, if if three of you get contacted individually and you're letting her know she's seeing a pattern here and she might reach out to the press and say, hey, it sounds like you have a lot of questions about this. Is there something I can do to help? And you can put it in the realm of someone who gets paid a full-time salary to do that. Right? Wonderful, wonderful idea. But it also can be that she can then also help you understand when you enter into that discourse, what you might be dealing with and how you might want to be prepared with what you're gonna say. Trust me, I've been there. I got I got interviewed by sort of a 60 News style, 60 Minutes news style reporter for two hours once and try to keep your story straight doing that. Right? You don't have to allow that to happen. I was young and foolish. In terms of fielding concerns, every board member agreed that nobody comes and complains to him about anything in the district, so we just skipped this one? Oh, wait, that's that was the one I was at last week. Okay. Excuse me. When a matter of concern to a member of the school community comes to an individual board director, the term I heard is chain of command. The director will listen, number one. You all agree your job is to hear the concerns. Then, using their personal judgment, the director shall refer the person with the concern to the proper level of the chain of command within the district to address it. In other words, if your concern's with the teacher, have you spoken to the teacher? Oh, you have? Did you know that the principal of that school? You could go talk to him or her, you know? Let them go up the chain, try to solve their own problem. Okay? Let me continue within the district address. Looping in those staff members who will likely be approached about the concern. So Barb, if someone comes to you with a specific concern about a program within the district or whatever, and you say, have you spoken to the person who runs that program? A real nice thing to do might be to send them an email saying, hey, someone came to me, want you to know. You might expect them to come your way. And and what I've seen happen typically is just the fact that you listen to them is usually enough. You know, that if they gotta take that extra step and pursue that person and do that, that that may not be worth it, but at least they know where they can go to do that. Okay? Put the second statement in here because some of you said, you know, I'm not completely always just referring concerns to the chain of command. If I hear something that says, my superintendent better know about this, I want to be able to let the superintendent know. And I'll give you an example. Upset with my daughter's third grade teacher because she failed her project and I know she worked hard and I don't understand. Go talk to the third grade teacher. Right? I'm upset with my third grade teacher because being told that third grade teacher's not doing very nice things and you can let your imagination run wild there. That's not refer the person to the third grade teacher. Right? It's like, hey, Dr. Hill, this is what I've heard. Can you and your staff look into this? Right? Feeling good about that? Probably none of this is things you haven't been doing already. Right? But once again, now it's in writing. It's in writing. And once again, when you stray out of it, and you got a few new board members, I know, when you stray out of it, you can you can say, don't forget, this is the way we operate. Okay? We spoke about complaints through emails because I bet you that never happens either. Right? Okay. So emails from community or staff sent to any individual board member are to be shared with all members of the board and the superintendent. If the email's already obviously shared that way, then you don't have to do anything. But sometimes people cherry pick and sometimes they'll put you in the BCC address line. And so you don't know if everyone else got it. So great habit would be if you've fielded the concern, you read it and then you forward it to everyone else in the team. And once everyone else has got it, people can stop doing that. The point being is nobody's left out of the loop. If it's worth complaining to Mr. Jones about it, it's also worth complaining to Mr. Chavez about it. Right? Because you can't do anything as an individual board member. What I've got is to be treated as public comment. That's just like me signing up and giving my get my three minutes or whatever you do here in this district. Right? As such, while board members, while all members of the board read all these emails, the board understands it does not have to reply except when it agrees what? As an entire board to to reply. Okay? Shouldn't have three different people reply to a concern because what can happen there? Get three different answers. Right? If you feel like it's a concern that raises to the level where there needs to be a board response, then respond as a board. And that puts President Heights in charge there as far as crafting it. Okay? All board directors understand they have no authority to address concerns of school community members as individuals. I think it was Will and I were talking about it the other day where, you know, someone comes to you, he goes, what you don't do is say, I'll take care of that. No, you point them in the right direction and ultimately, if they go through the chain of command, the last link of the chain of command sits in these five seats. And so then you as an entire board, whether it's through executive session or in a public session, can address it as an entire board. Right?
George, can we back up to the one previously? Because I know sometimes we get people who acknowledge that the board has addressed them. And I think we did this in the onboarding where we respond back and and basically kind of a general reply to say, you know, thank we've received your email. We've got your message. Thank you for your feedback. Obviously not elaborating too more deeply into that to not put the board in a in an awkward position. But I think like you said earlier, it means something that they've been acknowledged. And I think from as individual board members, I don't have a problem if if, you know, if that person ends up getting
Five of you acknowledge it, even if you're BCC.
Yeah. Exactly.
I just want you to know I got it.
Yeah, exactly. You know, because then I think they understand, one, you know, I commit to reading every email. Some, you know, I don't always get to respond, but usually the response is, you know, thank you for sending your email. We'll get it to the we're gonna get it to the right person or thank you for your feedback. But to go into any more depth of that, I think, you know, and Tammy's done a good job talking to us about that, where we can then inadvertently insert ourselves into a position where if the ultimate, like you said, chain of command is we're at the top, then it may come to a point where we have to recuse ourselves from a situation if we had inserted ourselves into something earlier in a situation. So because we we have to remain objective if something were to rise to the board level. So anyways, I just wanted to kind of go back to so that if if you're acknowledging that you've received an email and thanks for the feedback, I don't think that that's that's not what we're necessarily saying here as an acknowledgement.
So that top paragraph on on this slide, I don't know where it is on your document, but I will add before giving us back to you final, I will add language that basically says that each individual board member is encouraged to even acknowledge receipt of the message, but not to respond.
Yes.
Right?
Are you guys good with that? I think that's
Anyone hate it?
Nice, nice way to put it.
No, that's great. That's a great clarification. Love it. Probably be using it in every district going forward. All right. So that last paragraph, in each instance referenced above, the action the superintendent takes regarding any concern referred at that level will be communicated back once again to all board directors. So if you push it off to Dr. Hill, he has it handled within whatever the response is, he's gonna share with all of you. Okay? Fair enough? Last piece, I think, is about conflicts. We I asked each one of you, what do you how do you define a conflict of interest? The general response was typically was financially, but 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 folks said when an individual board director could benefit personally or financially from a decision of the board. And the agreement is you identify that you have that conflict, you might ask for legal advice about it, but you can always, without even legal advice, just say, I can't be involved in this decision-making process. I can't vote for my wife's raise that's different from everyone else's raise. I can't. I can't vote to approve a contract for a company I own that would do services with the district, things like that. Fair enough? I felt like you all were pretty well schooled on that. Just wanted to put it down in writing, though. Okay? You probably have it somewhere in policy, but that could be the next stoke. We can have a scavenger hunt to find that policy. The last one, I definitely like to always call out, and that's how you might at times make decisions in a split fashion. And and I just remind all boards that, one, it will happen and, two, it's not a sign of failure and, three, it should never damage your relationships. And what I heard from every one of you, and of course, it's easy to say it when you're not voting on a split decision, is that that's exactly what you think. That's that that's the way you feel it needs to happen. So the language I put together is in democratic processes such as conducting board business, it is understood there will occasionally be a disagreement. Number one is you gotta have all the information you needed to cast a vote. Right? All assuming all information needed for board directors to make an informed decision on an action item has been provided, if the board decides on a split vote, dissenters are given an opportunity to explain their stance. However, in the end, the entire board will pledge to support the decision of the majority and take no action to undermine it. The vote is cast, the now as a representative of the district, this becomes district policy, an action the district's taking, a decision the district has made, and your job is to support it. Okay? Even though you voted no. I've got notes to change three things for the better. And what I will do is I'll do that, I'll circle back and I'll loop in Amy, Andrea and Dr. Hill. And when you have that, if you can share it back out to everyone. Here's here's my suggestion for what you do with this is in a actual meeting, you might talk about that, how you you did this work. You don't have to read through it or whatever. And you might have a quick discussion as to whether each of you are all willing to pledge to work in that way. And then on an annual basis, you should go back to it and decide if you need to change anything because something could happen in the next 12 months that you're gonna say, we didn't have a norm for that and we probably need to have that. And once this was easy with you guys because you guys feel I feel like you're doing it all already. Okay? I do want to shift to that next topic that I shared with you and you've got homework in front of you. I put some post-it notes in in front of your spot. And the question I asked everyone is, you know, how comfortable are you understanding in your district what the role of the superintendent is or what the role of the board is? And where could you find something that says that? And I heard some people suppose there's some policy. I've seen most of the superintendent styles of contracts in the state and most of those have very nebulous language. And and what I am here to tell you is your defined roles was not created for your community, your governance team. Those came, you know, as a recommendation Those came, you know, as a recommendation after state law was passed through the Colorado Association of School Boards, which does a wonderful job on many policies, but doesn't understand the local nature of a governance team in a place like Grand Junction, or Mesa County. And so the way I described these roles is, they're in essence a Venn diagram. There's things that the board legally has to do, and that'll be the fun part of this exercise. There are things that the board can allow the superintendent to do, and only the superintendent, meaning the staff, okay? Superintendent leading the staff. But that, it's not, this is not where the board ventures. And then there's this nebulous area called the shared responsibilities, in which you got to strike agreements as to who does what in those roles. And so the Post-it notes you have in front of you are things, my scientific terminology is things districts do, okay? Do you want that a while? That's good, that's good. It's not a comprehensive list. Every time I do it, or every three times I do it, someone makes me form another Post-it of something I forgot that districts do. It's not meant to be comprehensive. But here's what the outcome of this can be. If you want to do it, and I think Will's way ahead of us here, he's probably spread them out for, there's board, there's superintendent, and there's shared. And once you've done that, I want you to come up and put them up. And the great thing is, I'm not going to video you, so I don't know who the heck put things where. But what I do is want to just get a double check. I've done this enough times where I can just glance at it, and I can say, "Oh, you want the superintendent have the responsibility to fire and terminate people? Okay, let's talk about that. Is that really where you want it?" Right? There's no wrong answers. And what's, here's the cooler thing about it. I think you guys are number 20 that I've done this with. I have not caught any of them to be the same in any district. And that, to me, that's wonderful, okay? But once we do it, I'll clarify it, and I'll tell you what the next steps would be if you'd like to do it. Move. What I actually do here is, we'll have a quick discussion as you're around here, and then I shoot pictures of it. And then I'll take it home, and if you give me about a week, what I do is, I create the role of the board. That's the way they all come out, don't worry about it. You're not unlike every board in the state of Colorado. And personally...
We do share a lot.
Yeah, no, no, that's all yours. That's all yours.
This is not me.
Yeah. All right. I was going to say, a healthy board understands this lane. And once again, these are the parts where you can step on each other's toes. But I'm just going to quick go through this. So approve a budget. And by the way, I didn't pull the verb discussion on you guys. The verb matters. Because there's another one on here, budget. The creating the budget is not yours. Your job is to take what's in front of you and approve it or not, right? So, great job there. Evaluate the superintendent. Yeah, you guys and only you guys. When you set up, if, I don't know what your process is, but it can include things like surveys and such. That's not the evaluation, though. That informs your evaluation. You guys work with the superintendent every day. Review and accept audit. The verbs are important. Govern legally, you bet. Transparently and ethically, those are the governance pieces. Establish or revise policies. I love it here. That's what I think the work of a board ought to be. I just want, and I'm not encouraging you to move it, but I want you to know, some boards put it there because they understand that there's an interplay with staff to get the language right, okay? But I love it there. Adopt curriculum materials. There shouldn't be things taught within your classes that you didn't approve for purchases. And that's how you do it, okay? And then approve a calendar. You don't make the calendar. A calendar's presented to you, and you approve it. So we're going to go to the superintendent now, and then we'll work our way to shared. So when I do pull it off, I got a question about why this is not shared. Not the job of a board to attract good employees? How am I, I'm, I leave it there if that's what you want, but I'm going to tell you, the best way to attract good employees is to be a functional board. Okay? When you have a circus and the room's filled every week because people don't trust you, it's hard to attract good people. Do you want to keep it here, or do you want to force it over here?
Share.
You comfortable with that, Dr. Hill?
My boss.
Okay.
This one, if I can go share.
Yeah, I'll bring it.
Okay? Is anyone uncomfortable with that?
Tammy's like, "No, leave it there."
Yeah, I don't have to do it anymore. Take my job. Secure grants, yeah, you're not writing them. Some of you will sign them, right? Supervise employees, you're not, not your job, not your lane, okay? People can complain to you about it. You might even be somewhere and see someone doing something that you wouldn't want them to do. Not your job, not your job. Propose a budget, yeah, they're the ones putting the numbers together, right? Evaluate employees, once again, you evaluate the superintendent. That's your only employee. Report student achievement to the public, yeah. I think they got the time, and you got the PIO officer and stuff. Doesn't mean you don't analyze it together, but getting that information out is probably here. Procure supplies, materials, and equipment. That's all the purchases that you make every day. You oversee them, right? Recommend employees for hire, their job. Provide professional development, their job. You provide it by approving a budget that has that in it, right? Submit required reports, yeah, they're doing it, not you. You might have to sign some, and so I do encourage you to review them. Guide the work of committees, yeah. You might create some committees, and you're probably going to have that in shared, but ultimately, it's the staff that makes sure those committees function. Recommend staffing levels, that's part of the proposing the budget process. Administer state assessments, you guys are not going classroom to classroom to do that. Enforce policy, you guys get to make it or adopt it, they enforce it. Oversight expenditures, I really got a problem with that. So he's got all that responsibility?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you get, like, quarterly budget reports? Okay, that's how you oversee expenditures, okay? It doesn't mean you complain about which plumber was hired to do something. It means you make sure the building repair budget is not overspent a quarter into the school year, right? Where we got? Establish committees, okay? Some, some school boards have to actually appoint people to committees. I don't know what your local flavor is here. District accountability members typically are supposed to be board-approved?
I don't think board has, I don't think board has established the board.
Yeah, the word that might be better would be fill, appoint committee members, things like that. You're good with it there? Okay. Dismiss or non-renew employees. Is an employee terminated because Dr. Hill says the employee's terminated? Okay, so it can live here, okay? It doesn't have to live over there. Some rural districts throw it there, which is scary. I mean, you're rural. You'd identify as rural, don't you? You're in the Rural Superintendent Academy.
Just going to make that.
Yeah, that's right. Ensure curriculum is taught. That's supervising, evaluating employees. Create the curriculum, they do. Ultimately, you adopt it. Ensure the annual audit is conducted. They're the ones pulling up all the files and presenting it to the auditor. You don't do that. You get the final audit and review it. The create a calendar typically lives within the staff. There might even be a master agreement thing about that. Okay, so now we're to shared. We know these live here because we agreed to that. Support employees, yay, yeah, all of you should do that. Advocate for resources. Your voice is better than his, by the way. Legislature wants to hear from elected officials, not appointed officials, about what they need. Award diplomas, you guys determine whether a kid graduates. You guys probably hand them out at a graduation ceremony. Measure progress toward priorities. Yeah, that can be a dual thing. Communicate consistently, yeah, the board has to communicate as well. Adhere to federal and state requirements, please, both of you. Engage the community, yes, all of you. Establish a vision, that's a collective thing, and you're going to be sharing some information about that soon. Communicate transparently, sure, both of you. Set graduation requirements, yeah. Policy, they're going to recommend policy, right? Use facilities effectively. You went through a big decision about what schools to continue operating, so I would surely put that in shared. It was ultimately board decision.
You could see that one up there. You could say, you can leave it there because technically the board does all of the students.
How you sign up for it.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So there's a dance there. Develop and administer local assessments, how does the board do that? You're writing, you're creating the test, sitting in there in the classroom with the kids, giving it? Okay? I would, that's part of curriculum creation, and that's how you measure student learning of it, okay? Report progress to community, absolutely. Communicate priorities, absolutely. Promote district accomplishments, absolutely. Communicate with the media, we just talked about. You each have a role in that. Adopt system-wide core values, absolutely. That should not be done one side or the other, should be shared. Okay, you guys, you have your very own, so what happens here is, I capture these two together, I capture these two together, I'm going to share it back with you in a document. And by the way, the document will be color-coded to show which ones are shared and which ones are not. That helps you. And something that I do for folks if they want to do is, I can take that role that you create here, and I can create an evaluation process by which you would evaluate your superintendent doing these things. And by the way, there's some districts who've done this, and they have a board self-evaluation. Are we staying in our lane? What can we do to improve the way we function next year? So we'll let you decide that later, okay? Okay, Alex says, "I got 11 minutes." So I'm going to start by singing and dancing. What would you like to hear? Because this shouldn't have to go too fast, but if you don't mind, I can get my stuff done. And if you have five or eight minutes, maybe where you can get some enchiladas that Angela brought, and before Alice starts talking to you, that'd be awesome, okay? This next section, and you have a whole separate document, basically it's possible board goals, okay? As in interviewing each one of you individually, I started with the people who've continued on the board, and I said, "What are you proud of having accomplished in your time on the board?" Okay? And so Barb and Jose Luis, I did not ask you that question because you're brand-new to the board, and that's okay. But then I asked the question, "What's your greatest hope for the board as a governance team?" And then I asked the question, "What's your greatest hope for the district?" And sometimes these really come together well, and sometimes they don't completely come together well. I'll let you judge for yourself as to how you feel about this. What I surely think you're going to see is some of your own words. And by the way, the celebrations, I think, are pretty strong. "The pragmatic way we've approached decision-making in a data-driven fashion, such as when we made difficult decisions about school closings. We did so in a succinct and kind way while fulfilling our fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers." Everyone who spoke to this said, "We know this was hard. We tried to take the emotion out of it. We tried to go with what the data said would make the most sense, and we tried to be responsible to the taxpayers of our community." That's a pat on the back, okay? Hard work. You did not shy away from that. Attracting and retaining high-quality educators and paying them fairly, thanks to significant raises for all staff during the last two years. What I heard is, you're feeling like you're doing a better job of attracting people, and you're feeling really good about what you're starting to pay them now. Feeling like there's been great progress on that front, okay? Kudos. Getting organized, focused, and bringing a level of professionalism to the boardroom. I love this quote. "We act professionally, worthy of the largest employer on the Western Slope." And my impression with you, with the five hours I had with you, each one hour individually, spot on, spot on. And by the way, with this work that you're doing today, spot on. Not even getting to the bigger picture when you're talking about what the actual strategic initiatives are. Oh, boy, there are three more, I forgot. "Finalizing the strategic plan that was nearly complete when we came into our positions. Those who pushed for change are starting to see positive results." Not many boards experience a change, a major change in the board in the process of doing a strategic plan, and then are able to carry that work forward. What it tells me, if you folks are trusting that people have been heard, they want certain kinds of change, and you're willing to continue working for that, and you're even saying the change is starting to happen, which includes increased student achievement and year-over-year growth. Very proud of it. Some of you said, "I'm not sure I can take responsibility for that, but it's happening, and I want to see it continue to happen," right? And then, "Our work on the new Grand Junction High School, including the approval of an early childhood center within it, something to be proud of as well."
Was that meant to be the health clinic? Yeah, I don't think it was...
Health clinic, I got the words wrong, Will.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
So, that's okay, that's why you're presenting it.
Hey, hey, I typed him as he said him, okay?
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't know you approved the early childhood center?
We did, hot dog.
Get that word out to the community. Hey, PIO guy.
Well... We do have universal pre-K that we have to do.
Okay, my apologies.
It's all good.
Will was, Will's face was this big.
It's okay.
Didn't see what I typed.
That's okay. Well, that's why we're, that's why you bring it before us, and we'll make the changes.
Yeah, that will be changed. And it's a health center. So school-based health centers, what you did. Did that in Canyon City on my way out the door. We opened up a middle school that had a school-based health center. So, these are the things, and this is one page here. And, you know, I think when you set goals, I think you don't want to typically go more than three, but for these things, these are things you agree, I'm going to read them to you, because this is what I heard. It's your job to decide, "Yeah, let's shoot for one, let's shoot for two, let's shoot for three, let's try to do all four." Okay? That's your decision to make. But this is food for thought for you. First one, "To work as a collaborative unit, model civility, and come together to make decisions in the best interest of students." Sounds like a core belief. Love that one. "To develop policy to move the district in a clear direction, ensuring all are up-to-date and address the modern challenges in our schools." I see you shaking your head, Barb, I caught you. Yeah. And what I'm going to tell you is, I heard this from like four of you, that we need to review and update our policies because they may not be appropriate for this point in time. Yeah. Took me, took me seven years as a superintendent in Canyon City. We started with, they weren't even Casby policies, so can you imagine that? It can be done. Just keep Dr. Hill around for seven years. Uh, yeah, that will be changed. Um, and it's a health center. So a school-based health center is what you did. Did, did that in Canyon City on my way out the door. We opened up a middle school that had a school-based health center. So, th- these are the things, and this is one page here. And, you know, I think when you set goals, I think you don't wanna typically go more than three. But if are these things, these are things you agree, I'm gonna read them to you because this is what I heard. It's your job to decide, yeah, let's shoot for one, let's shoot for two, let's shoot for three, let's try to do all four. Okay? That's your decision to make, but this is food for thought for you. First one, to work as a collaborative unit, model civility, and come together to make decisions in the best interest of students. Sounds like a core belief. Love that one. To develop policy to move the district in a clear direction, ensuring all are up-to-date and address the modern challenges in our schools. I see you shaking your head, Barb, I caught you. Yeah. And, and what I'm gonna tell you is I heard this from like four of you, that we need to, we need to review and update our policies because they may not be appropriate for this point in time. Took me, took me seven years as a superintendent in Canyon City. We started with, they weren't even CASB policies, so can you imagine that? It can be done. Just keep Dr. Hill around for seven years. To sustain the positive trajectory of the district by improving learning outcomes and compensating staff fairly. So it's the continuing to attract and honor staff and, but, but continue to improve the learning outcomes in relation to that. Uh, I'm, and this was an individual that I, and I loved it because I think all boards of education need to hear from a broad range of students. Too often, we parade all the high flyers in front of you, the, the folks whose school's working great for, and y'all pat yourself on the back. What I'm reading in this is to create a committee of students with diverse learning experiences to engage and inform the board about desired improvements. In other words, listen to the kids who maybe the system hasn't been working for. That's one for you to think about deeply, okay? And then I asked that question, "What's your greatest hope for the district?" And it's a two-slider here. I, I did my best to capture everything. And it's, at least if you wanted me to, to pull this down into a paragraph, I could, but I felt like it was pretty broad, okay? So, to be recognized as the most outstanding school district in Colorado when it comes to, somebody said the nation, so I limited it to Colorado for now, if that's all right. Okay. When it comes to student achievement and learning growth, providing exceptional learning opportunities that prepare students for the real world. I heard every one of you say that. Making all children feel welcome, safe, and supported for success. Making teachers feel valued, appreciated, and heard as they strive for excellent outcomes. Addressing funding challenges by investing resources wisely to achieve success. Simply stated, to be the place parents take their children to grow and prosper. And I heard, I heard versions of that multiple times from- That's my work on this front. Anything I can do to support you in getting it finalized, all you have to do is let me know.
This is me just being picky. Can we say families instead of parents? Cause that's more encompassing of, it may be a guardian or somebody, so, but I like it though.
Board, are you interested in what George talked about with the, him helping us establish an evaluation, both for us and for Dr. Hill, based off of? I, I would personally be interested in that, so, yes. Okay, George, it sounds like we have a consensus on the board to, to create the board evaluation and a superintendent evaluation based off of what we put up there would be really helpful.
So what we, you'll get back from me in a- Hello? What you'll get back from me within a couple of weeks will be first, the draft rolls. Um, and I will actually send you a draft superintendent evaluation to show, show you a format. And I'll work directly with Dr. Hill first about that. And then if he's comfortable going to board with that, we'll do that. And then we'll take that next step and build one out for the board.
Perfect.
Will, will that take place of the board evaluation that we did last year?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, Angela and Dr. Schultes had done a, had done a lot of work on that one, but I think this one's gonna encompass a little bit more specifically, hence, you know, why we do the board, the board retreats, which I know when, when board members come on in November and then we immediately go to CASB, it's a lot. And so, um, it'd be nice if each year we did our own kind of retreat earlier in the year, now that you are all established. You know, maybe by like September, latest October, where we sit down and we review these things. And then we also review what we'd like to evaluate Dr. Hill on for that coming year, so, um, or-
We could even do it in the spring.
Right, we could even do it earlier. That's true. Yep. Time.
The state timeline is generally March 1st to make some kind of a decision. However, that doesn't have to be the timeline for evaluation and it doesn't have to be the timeline for evaluation to sort of pilot a process. A lot of the districts that I do this with, and if we're doing it at this time of the year, they do this in late April, early May as practice and then they align it to the state law, make a decision by March 1st, process going forward. That's something you, you can do. There's a lot of possibilities within that. But ultimately, when you do an evaluation process, you want to set a timeline that's gonna be adhered to going forward.
Yeah, I, I should have clarified. The board retreat would be in the fall and then we'd have, we still have our evaluation process in the spring. Sorry. I was kinda putting two things together there, so. This is great.
And, and board retreat time in the fall would be a great time to finalize goals.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, George. This was really, this is awesome. Yes, that would be- All right, thank you.
Got about twenty-five minutes. I want to say a few things first before we start with this. I want you guys to know that we get to work with with school districts and school boards all over Colorado. Probably, George, you've done about twenty board norms and agreements and goal setting and roles and responsibilities. There might be another five that have done that work. So you guys are already at the upper echelon of school boards. And I think it's commendable that you guys gave your evening, your time this week to sit down with each other and say, let's talk about why we do our work and how we do our work. So that when you get to the what of the work, you do it in a way that is collaborative, open, like you create the space for each other to be colleagues on this board. So thank you for doing that. It was really great. It was also nice to see the goals that you set for yourself, or at least that version of those goals are so aligned to the strategic plan that this district created three years ago and has been working on implementing for the last two years. So something else that you guys can pat yourselves on the back for is that probably of the hundred and seventy-eight school districts in Colorado, probably about seventy-five even have a strategic plan. And I'd say probably about twenty of them actually worked their strategic plan. And you're one of those districts as well because the work you've done over the last couple of years with your strategic plan has been a model for a lot of other districts. So I want you guys to eat. I'm going to walk you through the strategic plan. It was pretty cool. I remember it was our three veteran board members. It was your first ever board meeting as elected board members when we said, hey, we've got like an eighty percent baked strategic plan. Here's what's in there. Are you guys down? Do you guys, is this behind you? And Will, I remember you said, geez, it feels like the platform I ran on. And that was, that was really nice to hear, and it's also very aligned with like, well, it was a community co-created plan. If you, if we look at the, first of all, the graphics, I love. This could be the strategic plan for no one on earth but D fifty-one. And that's always a good sign. A lot of times I show this off when people are talking about, what do they want it to look like? I'm like, what, you mean look like? They're like, yes. I say, look at this one. This could be nowhere else on earth but D fifty-one. You should do your plan. So it's very much aligns with your community. But a lot of times I also point to the letter that Dr. Hill wrote to introduce the strategic plan as a model because what it talked about was the process and the hopes for the plan. I want to point to that first paragraph. He talks about this was, is the product of months of work and hundreds of people. It was a truly community co-created plan. What a co-creation gives you is really good buy-in to a plan. When people read this plan and they say, hey, my voice was welcomed into this process and what I wanted ended up in the plan. And not everything. So whenever you're creating a plan, you've got, a lot of people have a lot of wishes. But I would say that of the, I think we had like sixty people in this room do as your task force, and then a lot of other people were involved in listening sessions to get their input into the plan. I would say that, well, I know because we did a survey at the end, everyone said my voice was listened to and I got important things that I cared about into that plan. And that's a really important thing to build buy-in. So I'm just going to walk you through. You each have a copy of the plan in front of you. So I'm going to walk you through the, the parts of the plan, the letter we already talked about. This is probably the best page for board members because what this talks about are our three focus areas and our nine strategic priorities. Your three focus areas are almost the same that we do it in a very organic way. And every community we work in comes up with these three as the focus areas. We want the first focus area to be about our kids, outcomes that we want to see for our kids. The second one is almost always about their staff and the third one's about the community. The nine strategic priorities are always very much unique by that community. And you're, and, and a lot of districts have way fewer strategic priorities. This is a big district. You have a lot of bandwidth and you guys have been pretty aggressive with nine strategic priorities. If you guys are going on for your next strategic plan, because this one expires at the end of next year, as you're building your next strategic plan, I would suggest focus this a little, maybe not nine strategic priorities, really say, what are the most important things we want to see move in this next period and maybe six strategic priorities. But your nine strategic priorities, it's hard to argue with any of these, right? When you're talking about prepared and supported students, you have three big focus areas. We want our students to be well and you define that as really feel like they're belonging, that they belong when they come to school and feel supported in their learning experience. That's your wellness. The second goal is, so now they're there, they feel like they belong and they're well, what do we want them to do? We want them to experience academic success. And you really focus both on growth and performance. So it's both growth and achievement. And then your third goal for your, for your kids is we want them to have aligned and robust learning experiences. In other words, we want them to have learning experiences while they're in our school that prepare them for what they're going to do after they're in school. So we want those things to be career connected and ready, enable them for success in their post-secondary lives. So those are your three strategic priorities and your focus area on your kids. The second focus area is prepared and supported staff. There were three focus areas there, or three strategic priorities there. The first one, professional learning. We want to make sure that our educators get the support they need so that they can really do great teaching and learning when they're in their classrooms and support the students when they're in the, in the buildings. The second one was focusing on diverse and growing pipelines. This is saying, we want to make sure that our staff reflects the students that are in our buildings. And the third one is, we want our staff also to feel well. So we're focusing on health support they need to engage with the students and families as healthy leaders. So that's pretty cool because we know now that when we wrote this plan, it was twenty nineteen, we were talking about recruitment and retention, but nothing like what we're talking about it now. You guys saw that coming and built that right in because we know what gives people the confidence to stay in a job? Do I feel supported for my growth, professional learning? Am I recognized and seen in my building, diverse and growing pipelines? And then am I supported with my physical, social, emotional and mental health? That's wellness. So you've, you've pretty much knocked out that focus area. The last focus area is effective community, I'm sorry, is engaged and supportive community partners. And the three strategic priorities, effective community partnerships to advance strategic goals. So it was really important. A lot of people use the word engagement, community engagement. It's that word partnership is really powerful in here. It's how are we working with our partners in the community to create a flourishing community here in the valley? The second one, are we spending our money appropriately, transparent and effective resource allocation? Are we spending it the right way? And the last one, how are we communicating with our families? So why I say this is the best page for a board member? If I was in your seat, I'd want a miniature version of this laminated that I'd keep in my pocket so that when people came up to me at the grocery store, does that ever happen to you? It happened to me all the time when I was in Cortez. And they come up at the grocery store and they say, this is what I think you should be working on. I'd want to pull this out and say, is it aligned with what our strategic plan is? And do you think what you're talking about is more important than these nine things? And the guess, my guess is most people will look at it and go, no, keep working, keep working on those nine things because those things are going to actually move our district forward. So being very fluent in what your strategic priorities are is really important. By the way, I know that for our three board members, you guys are like, gosh, Alex, you're telling me about the strategic plan. You guys have been disciplined about getting reports on that plan, but it's good to zoom out every once in a while and look at it holistically. Rather than just, oh, we're just talking about this this time is really think about, are these nine things going to add up to what we want for our community? And I think they will. The next two pages, we won't spend a lot of time on, but this was the product of all of that empathy building, all that data collection that we did to find out what do people want and need. So we had a multiple, like I guess about twelve listening sessions. I think we did three in Spanish and nine in English. We had a bunch of people show up and what we did is we collected their input. What do you want for your school and district? And these were the big themes that came out of that. The one thing I will point to on page, I guess it's page six or page five, are your four core behaviors, your vision and mission. Those are updated. Those are going to be, my guess is pretty evergreen. When you read through those, I can't imagine when you don't want to engage, equip and empower each and every student each and every day. That is, and by the way, the alignment that I've seen over the last two years to that vision, your, your staff knows your vision for what you want to get out of this district. And what I always say to people is when you have a staff that buys into a vision, never change your vision. The ninety percent of it is just having people go, yeah, I know what we're trying to do, engage, equip and empower. So the next two pages are your graduate profile. This is a great way to talk to people about what is, what are you trying to achieve as your North Star, your end results? And it's that every student who graduates from a D fifty-one school is competent in these areas. Again, you'll see engage, equip and empower. And the three things that are called out, I call them the big buckets. We want all of our students to be creative problem solvers, culturally connected and ready for career and life. And then you've got sub competencies under that. Creativity and innovation, resilience, critical thinking, teamwork, global and cultural awareness and skilled communication. And then under ready for career and life, academically proficient, self-directed, self-aware, self-advocacy and career awareness. The beautiful thing about this is you'll have some people that'll come up to you and, and I understand when people say this, but they'll come up and say, schools should just be about reading, writing and math. And it's in there, academically proficient. When you look academically proficient, we want all of our students to be content masters. But when they say that, this is a good thing to pull out and say, well, we're trying to do that and more because we need our students to be more than just people that can read, write and do math. We need them to be resilient. We need them to be critical thinkers. We need them to be able to work on teams. We need them to be aware of, of different people. We need them to be skilled communicators. And you're calling out those competencies. And it's really, again, I think most people would agree, yes, I want my graduates. I want them to be able to read, write and do math. And you're like, so do we, academically proficient. It's actually the first thing in, at the end there. But we also want them to have all these other competencies too. And we're doing, we're building learning experiences that will give them those opportunities to develop those competencies. And that's a pretty cool thing.
I was just going to say, and I think we've done it before when we've presented, but anytime I present this to groups, I do an activity where I just ask them to think about the last great person that they hired, because it's usually business people we're talking to. And then I ask them to list off what were the things that they were looking for in that great hire. And never have I had any of them talk about their grades or how good of an athlete they were or what theater production they're in. They always talk about these things. And I just think it's a good reminder of like what colleges, employers, everybody's looking for is they want intelligent kids, but they want to make sure they can do these other things too, or else they're going to be, they're not going to be successful. So it's always cool to hear that. I've never had a, any of the groups I've talked to have never, I say, the one that had a four-point-O GPA. Not that that's not important, but we know that these are also as important.
That's right. I was looking for someone that really understood quadratic equations. I mean, that's never going to be the, we do want them to do that, but we want them to be able to apply that learning and do it. And is there a math teacher that's upset with me here? I love quadratics, by the way. I do, I feel like this is a really powerful thing. The good news is that, and it's really because people want it in your district. We had more and more educators say, okay, we're ready to go to the next level. And this is pretty common. When we build a graduate profile, we've built them with about sixty districts in Colorado. The first year or two is just like having it as something they call to, as a reason, like something that inspires them. And then right around year three, we're seeing more and more districts come to us and say, all right, we're, we want to actually make this come alive in the classroom. We want to be more strategic about how are we building the competence of resilience? And the good news is, is that was, we've been asked to work with you to build out like a single point rubric. So when someone says, what does it look like for a third grader to demonstrate resilience? What do I look for? And, and what does it look like when they're just starting to develop resilience? And what does it mean when they have it? And, and they, it shows, how does, what does it look like when a student is being a sixth graders demonstrating self-advocacy? Because that's really important to be able to give them feedback to say, we're looking for growth in these areas. That's something that we're working on right now in the district. So let's go to the next. So actually, right there, to me, at a board level, those are, those are the, those are things that you guys set and you guys are holding the district accountable. This is the outcome. These are the outcomes we're looking for. The next few pages is how would you know if you're making good progress towards those outcomes? So what we do is, it's kind of a Goldilocks thing. We're trying to give people enough information without burying them in all the details of the work they do. But this is like the executive plan for how do we carry out and get to these strategic priorities? So the next four pages on this document are saying, how will we measure? How will we know if we're making progress? So the first one was prepared, in prepared and supported students, was talking about belonging. So they listed, we're going to measure this. We picked a few metrics that we believe in, that we feel like are giving us good data. And we're going to hold ourselves accountable to moving that data forward. So here they used the Castle Skill, the survey that asked students, do you feel like you belong at school? So they, they picked out specific questions on surveys and they're tracking the students' answers against those surveys to say, are we doing the right work to get students to report? And students are very honest and actually that data is super valid. When students say that they belong at school, they belong at school. When they say they don't, they don't. So all you have to do is ask students, how's it going? And they'll let you know. And so I work with your teams that do this work. They're tracking this very carefully. Academic success is the easiest one and the hardest one to move, by the way. But the easiest one to track because what you guys said is, we're going to go to the end result, which is our state performance framework, our, our school and district performance frameworks that the state gives out. And we're going to say, we want to see our schools move into those top two categories of performance and improving. And we want to see, you guys set, I, when you first set your goals, I remember I looked at your team. I said, these are like, you're setting yourselves up for like hard, hard years. They did it and so far, knock on wood, the first year they, they beat their goal. And now that was of eighty percent, you guys hit eighty-two percent. This year is ninety percent. Year three is a hundred percent. That's a bold goal to set and as a board, you got to love it. Because let's say you get to ninety-two or ninety-three percent of your schools, that's amazing considering that you started with about twenty-five percent of your schools not in this top two performances. So that's, that's what you did in the second one. Third one, robust and aligned learning experiences. This is one that when we set this, there weren't really good metrics for us to focus on. So what they said is, we're going to first really find out what are the experiences? So they did, in year one, they said, we, we want to map what are the experiences we have. In year two, we want to see more students getting into those experiences. And that's what we're looking at there. And then the idea is by year three, students are graduating with a post-secondary plan. They know what they're going to do once they graduate from high school. Going to your, your second focus area, prepared and supported staff. The first one was all around professional learning. So this is just teachers reporting that they feel supported and that they're getting the growth they need. And again, by year three, you're looking for a hundred percent of your educators to report that they are using the professional learning that they're getting to improve their instructional outcomes for students. Which is pretty, another bold goal and also one that might be achievable. If the professional learning is highly effective, teachers will say, you know, this met my needs and I'm using it to get better as a teacher. So it's not impossible to get to that one hundred. If you look at diverse and growing pipelines, this is one that was a little derailed. This is the only one actually that we've looked at and said, hey, when we wrote this in twenty nineteen, we didn't know that in March of twenty twenty, a little thing called the pandemic was going to happen that might throw these things off. They're still working at driving towards these outcomes. And they're also looking at other challenges that have presented themselves over the last three years. I'm sorry, the pandemic was already going when we did this, but we didn't know, we didn't know what the ramifications were when we were writing this thing. Staff wellness, this one's all around, again, staff reporting how they feel supported in the district. And we're already seeing great data there as well. And then the last section is on robust and engaged, I'm sorry, engaged and supported community partnerships. The first one was all about really building up, like mapping and, and tracking which community partners are working with the district to support efforts. You've got Dr. Christensen, he's doing a great job working on that with the D fifty-one foundation. And that's making great progress. Transparent resource allocation, I actually have twice asked, asked favors of your CFO, Mel Trujillo and COO Clint Garcia, because I think they're kind of like one of the best tandems in the state, working together to operate this. And they are the ones that are leading that strategic priority. I feel very confident that you're going to hit your goals there. And then communication and connection with families. So there you've got a pretty amazing, I think you just had your last presentation at your last board meeting on, on this with Trey Gallegos along with Callie, right? And pretty cool work that they're doing with the family engagement plan, giving them the resources they need and also getting a new website. So you can see that unlike some districts, that they make a strategic plan which builds energy and then it lives on a shelf somewhere for a couple of years until someone remembers they had it. You guys, and I think it's largely because you as a board said, we will be asking to get reports on this work. Like not just someday, but we're asking for reports and updates on how we're making progress against this plan every single month. And you guys are getting those reports and that's really important. The last page of, of your strategic plan is an important one because it reminds people that this isn't Dr. Hill's job or a few people's central office or a couple, five board members who are going to be executing this plan. Everyone has a role to play in getting this plan to come to life. Now, we're, I'm going to pause it in a second. I've talked, I've gotten you your whole meal. I've talked through your entire meal. But I'm going to ask if you have any questions about this strategic plan and what might come next? Or how is it, how is it felt as, was this a nice tool to have as brand-new board members when you had the strategic plan in your pocket?
Yeah, I think it gives us guidance and direction. I guess my question would be, now that we're going to be going in and doing our next plan for five years. And I think you are going to be here seven years, right? Twenty thirty? Yeah, right. So you're here. Is, do we, so obviously we don't need to recreate the wheel. And how, and maybe I'm getting like twenty steps ahead of myself, but what do we take from here? I guess we boil down some things, right? Like we make, like you said, make this more succinct. And do we go back and do a whole nother community partnership to make it succinct? Or do we, or now that we have our different committees and you get what I'm asking, like?
Yeah, I, well, I'm going to, I'm going to front load this. So technically, we don't have to work with CEI for the next one. So we'll let him explain what maybe he would do if he was chosen. But, and, and on that note, I do want to say how grateful we are to CEI because I know we've talked about it, but we tried to do it ourselves at first and it was really hard to do in-house. And then COVID hit obviously and that threw everything off. So really appreciative to CEI for not only helping us create this with the community, but the amount of support that they provided since then. Because a lot of times it's kind of like, here's your plan, go figure it out. But they've continued to support our staff through implementing it the first year and a half. And so we do appreciate that. But with that being said, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to be, the next ones help us. But if, I guess if you want to talk about what that would look like if you've worked with districts in the past on what would come next if you're going to update the plan.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, thank you. Yes.
Happy to talk about that. And we're actually, we've only, we only started doing strategic plans like five and a half years ago. So we're just getting to our first rounds where we started to engage on the second round. And we've sat down as a team and we said, what would we recommend? Well, the good news is, a lot of this is evergreen. I, I would say you bring your grad profile up and you validate it. So you get it. So my first answer to that first question you ask is, my recommendation would be another full community process because that creates buy-in and momentum. You do it because you want your community to come and give input. Also, it's an opportunity to share, okay, this is how we did in our first strategic plan. These are, there are certain things in this plan that you're going to be able to plant the flag and say, we, we've got this now. We're still going to keep doing it, but we don't need to have it in our strategic plan because now it's part of like muscle memory. We do this work, we've got the systems built, we're going to continue doing it. There could be some new things that are going to emerge in your second plan, but you're going to want to get the community to give input on those things. You'd never want to just hand it to your community and say, we've got this now, we're really good at it. Because then people get turned off. They say, it's your plan. Great, you do it. And that's not what we're asking. We're asking people to lean in even more, even harder next time to help do the second big push. So I would, and the grad profile, so again, you're not doing a whole nother grad profile development, which was a big part of this first plan. That's there, you validate it. People are like, yep, we still love that. Let's go. Your vision, mission, core beliefs, yep, we love these, these still work. Your vision, mission, core beliefs, yep, we love these, these still work. You do a day where you do a real good deep data study with your community. Why I love this one is, we did it in this room, and there were, I think we just got all the tables out, and it was just like sixty-five or seventy chairs, and they were all full. But we went through it, and people talked, and we had posters up, and people gave their ideas, and then we trapped that data and brought it back to them the next time. So I would do that same process to get from, what are our, what's our current state? Like, let's ask the questions we need to ask. Let's go out and ask our neighbors what they think. So we collect another big body of data. And then we'd come together and we'd say, so where are the prior, what priority themes are starting to emerge from the community? And do the same thing again. Go say, okay, so what are our focus areas? Are they still engaged in supporting students, engaged in supporting staff, community partners? Maybe. If there might be a new one, comes up, who knows? That only happens through a community-engaged process. I think it's a less robust, but it's still going to be a pretty, I would recommend that you do another pretty robust plan because you're building the plan for the next five years, this time it's even got it.
Well, and the other thing too is, we, yeah, so it would be good to have a five-year, I think, plan. That's pretty standard for the next one. And we did three this time around because it was in the middle of COVID, and we were trying, we didn't even know what was going to happen next week. So three years felt better at that time, but it would be great to have a five-year. And then, you know, we, thanks to Jen and her folks, they wrote for Easy Grant Dollars. We actually have grant funds that can help pay for that process to be done. So, you know, we have some time because we'd want to do that next school year, obviously, so that by the start of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, we've got this new five-year plan that would get us through twenty-thirty, and we've got grant funds that can help us to pay for that.
Yeah, it's good to be building the next plan as you're rolling out, as you're finishing your last plan. So it rolls out smoothly. And in a perfect timeline, you'd have your next plan done by around this time in 2025. Because I was just saying to Brian, like, when you were talking about superintendent evaluation, I think superintendents should be evaluated on a different cycle than everyone else. Because Brian, at this, when I was a superintendent, I always thought of February fifteenth as when I started thinking about the next school year. I was done thinking about the school year because I had to be planning for next school year while everyone else is finishing this school year. So it would be interesting for you guys to think about, I mean, I've never heard of anyone that does it, but evaluate like March to March for a superintendent. And then they're actually getting feedback at the end. That's why building a valuation process with George next month would be perfect because you'd say, okay, now we're setting your goals for next year. And that mid, that fall retreat would be halfway through the year, for the superintendent's year. But that's the same thing for a strategic plan, right? So right now, so I get to meet with your teams on Thursday, and we're going to be talking about, okay, continuing to roll out and meet your goals for this school year because they set goals this year. But right now is when I'm going to start pushing them to say, what are you going to do to keep the momentum so that you launch next school year? And you're flying into your final year of this plan. Because that's when we have to land the plane, right? So the preparation we're doing right now is to support the continued work for the second year of implementation. But right now is when you're starting to think about, okay, what do we need to do to set ourselves up for success in our final year of implementation? And then while we're in the final year of implementation, we should be planning for what's the next plan? That would be my recommendation, if this school district decides to work with CEI anymore. That's all I've got, board, any questions or any?
Any other questions?
And we're right on time, seven o'clock.
Thank you, yes, that's great. Good job. Do we, we'll do a quick cleanup, right? And then I, yeah, we can get set up for the social worlds and youth wellbeing study update. So if you guys want to. Take it away.
Thank you all so much for giving us some time to come here and share with you some of our findings from our time spent in this district doing, carrying out the social worlds and youth wellbeing study. So I know we delivered a pretty massive report. Hopefully, the executive summary was a good guide and overview, and then you can kind of use that to delve deeper. Obviously, we're not going to be able to go through absolutely every single thing in the report today, but we're going to give you a good overview of some take-home points and things to think about, and then hopefully have a bit of a conversation. We do want to acknowledge, we have a wonderful co-investigator. She's on day two back from maternity leave. So she's not here with us today, but she's definitely played a major role in rolling all of this out, as well as our incredible research team, who also were critical to getting this done. So I want to just revisit some of the initial goals that we had with this study from the very beginning. The study began, actually, in 2018. We began talking with Dr. Circo. Because we discovered we had this shared interest in figuring out better ways to do suicide prevention in schools. And one of the things that we believed as sociologists of education, as well as sociologists of youth suicide, who have, we've dedicated the past twelve years to working with schools to figure out ways to better support kids, to prevent suicide, and also to take care of kids after suicide losses have happened in our schools. And we really felt like it was important to come into schools and actually have an opportunity to learn from school staff about how they do this work. And of course, at the same time, we wanted to be able to give back and to help identify things that impede or enhance the suicide prevention strategies that schools use. And then ultimately, we want to leverage this knowledge to help develop sustainable, effective, and equitable suicide prevention strategies that schools across the United States can use. So those were shared goals. And one of the really important reasons, of course, for thinking about youth suicide is that unfortunately, particularly since 2007, we've just seen dramatic increases across the United States in youth suicide. Among certain subpopulations, so this is a table from the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, showing the suicide rate among people ages fifteen to nineteen. I don't have this broken down by gender, but I can tell you that for girls ages fifteen to nineteen, the suicide rates over this period have reached unprecedented rates that we haven't seen in over forty years. So this is really a unique period in our society. For our kids, our little guys ages ten to fourteen, the suicide rate has increased to a rate we've never seen before, and it's actually been declared a national crisis. And there's been this huge effort to begin improving suicide prevention in our middle schools and even our elementary schools because unfortunately, we see suicides happening at earlier and earlier ages. Of course, this is also a local problem, right? Mesa County, one of the reasons that Dr. Circo reached out to us and asked if we could collaborate on this project was because Mesa County has had some really difficult years and is more impacted by suicide than other places in Colorado and the United States. Additionally, the youth and young adults in Mesa County are disproportionately impacted by suicide and suicidality. So this is from the Mesa County Suicide Report from the Department of Public Health, 2022. And you can see on the left here that our youth and young adults are the largest group who are showing up in our emergency departments for suicidality. And they're also the ones who are, have the highest rates of suicide attempts and ideations. And this is local data. So one of the things that's broadly understood in suicide prevention is that schools are one of the most important places where we have opportunities to prevent suicide. But what is less known is that we actually have very few evidence-based strategies for schools to use to prevent suicide that schools can actually sustain over the long run. A lot of our strategies were actually developed in clinical settings and then just kind of put into a school without any consideration of all of the other things that schools have on their plate or that school staff have to accomplish. And so that is one of the reasons we formed this collaboration with D-51 and developed this project to figure out ways that we can do better to serve kids and families. We're really grateful to our funders, especially the Western Colorado Community Foundation, which gave us our seed money, our initial eighty thousand, which we were able to use to collect initial data so that we could prove to the National Institute of Mental Health that this was actually a really important project that would be worthwhile. And then we had the National Institute of Mental Health invest two million dollars. That is what resulted in this mammoth project and report for you all. We spent all of that money here in the Grand Valley. I'm not going to go over our methods in any great detail, although I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. But one of the main things we did was participant observation. So we shadowed school staff, and we learned about how they worked on a daily basis. We learned how they innovated, how they got creative, the things they did to support kids, you know, broadly speaking, as well as in moments of crisis. So we ended up shadowing two hundred and seventy-one school staff members. We also did interviews with a broad swath of individuals, with students, obviously, with parental consent, with young adults who had recently graduated from the school district, with our families, with our school and district staff, as well as some community professionals, often the mental health workers in the Grand Valley. We also had an opportunity to do two surveys, both a family survey where we were able to collect the insights from over seven hundred family members with children attending D-51 middle and high schools, as well as school and district staff from two middle schools and then all of the high schools. The support that we had from the district, as well as from the school leadership, was incredible. And we ended up with a seventy-five percent response rate on our staff survey. And just for context, in order for that survey to be able to produce like robust insights and represent what, how staff feel and their experiences, we needed to cross the threshold of thirty percent, and we hit seventy-five. So that's really, that's really amazing. So now I'm going to turn to sort of sharing out some of these highlights. I'm going to begin with youth voices because they're really at the center of this, right? So kids really want us to listen to them, to give them chances for leadership, to participate in developing our mental health promotion strategies and identifying ways that we can improve their lives and their wellbeing. Some of the things that they are very quick to remind us of is that they're growing up in a world that looks really different from our own, and they really want a seat at the table when it comes to these really important issues that a lot of kids really care about. Kids also, they don't want to be judged, and they definitely don't want to be labeled or perceived as a bad kid, even when they sometimes do things that are perhaps not what the adults in their lives wish they would engage in. Part of this is that they actually, they really care what their school staff members think about them. And so those, they want a second chance, and they just, they want to feel like they belong at school and like they matter to school staff. They also want stuff to do. This is more of a problem on the eastern side of the valley as opposed to the west, where I think the west has a great rec center that is just a really positive place for kids to go and hang out and spend time together. We're also going to be sharing this information with community leaders. So like, that's maybe perhaps less on the school district, but we're also just faithfully reporting what kids said. So when it comes to understanding the role of schools in suicide prevention, our data was incredibly clear. The bottom line, according to both families as well as school staff, is that suicide prevention is very much seen as part of the job of schools and the work that we need school staff to be doing. So just to show you, I promise this is the most you're going to see on one slide. But it's really important to kind of look at it all together. So these are a series of survey items that we asked families. We also asked school staff these exact same questions, and their answers looked almost similar to this. It's just that more school staff strongly agreed than families. But what you can see here is that across the board, the vast majority of families, over eighty percent across the board, strongly agree that schools should train staff members to recognize warning signs of suicide, should help connect families to community support services, educate students about warning signs of suicide, have mental health staff that can talk with suicidal students to determine next steps, be able to advise parents and guardians about how to support their suicidal child. And then the only item that had a little less support, although it was still a majority, is this last item, that schools should provide support to suicidal students during the school day. There is sometimes some stigma around suicide, and we sometimes, both school staff as well as families, kind of want to like, be like, no, I don't want my kid exposed to someone who's suicidal. However, it's actually the law that we, unless a kid is in a suicidal crisis and they need something like a crisis care or hospitalization, we do need to find ways to serve them in school buildings. we do need to find ways to serve them in school buildings and especially provide support that enables them to get back to their class and have those opportunities to learn. So this is a pretty broad endorsement of things that families, as well as school staff, feel that schools should be able to do. There are, of course, some challenges to schools prioritizing suicide prevention. Sometimes finding that right balance between academics versus the social-emotional side of schools can be tricky on both sides, right? Sometimes the academics dominate, and other times kids' needs for social-emotional support are so intense that it can be hard to like find ways to get them back into class. So these, this can be tricky. I think it's particularly tricky in the context of resource scarcity, particularly with regard to not being able to fill all mental health staff positions. And, you know, and that's just unfortunately a reality that we see in schools here in the Grand Valley, but also in other parts of the country. This last point is also really important. We had a good subset of families that basically do recognize that we're asking so much of schools and that they really wish a different social institution, like healthcare or mental healthcare or our faith communities, could pick up the slack and, you know, give schools a break. And I appreciate that, but I actually would prefer that they were like, wow, schools are really overburdened. We need to give them more resources so that they're not so overburdened. And that's simply because there's no way that schools can get out of doing this work, because kids spend the majority of their waking hours in school buildings. Every kid has access to a public school, and that just means that this is the best place for us to lay eyes on kids on a regular basis, to get to know them, and have this opportunity to see when they're suffering and connect them to care. Of course, sometimes we're going to be connecting them to care that's in the community rather than within the school building. So there is absolutely a role for all of those other critical organizations in our communities. So one of the reasons that I feel so strongly about that is just when we look at the prevalence of suicide prevention that is just actually happening in schools, it becomes abundantly clear that we have to have ways and mechanisms to do this work and do it well. So we asked a series of questions that have to do with how often school staff are engaged in different forms of suicide prevention work or work to support students' mental health. So we asked questions like, how often do you talk to a student about their mental health? How often do you tell a counselor, I'm concerned about a student? How often do you send a student to the counselor? And also things like, how often do you ask a student if they're thinking about suicide? Let's start with the teachers, which is the third bar down in this figure. And what I want you to see here is that over 50% of our teachers are actually asking this question of a student at least once a year. That's a lot of teachers engaging in this work. And on the one hand, that's really beautiful. I appreciate how much teachers care about their students and how far they're willing to go to support them. But that's, that's a lot of work that they're having to do. Administrators are also heavily involved in suicide prevention. We had 4% of administrators say they do this weekly. 44% do it monthly. So the majority of administrators are having to engage in this work regularly. Of course, our mental health staff are the ones who do this the most often. Almost 11% do it daily. 24% do it weekly. 40% do it monthly. You can just see like how often our school staff are having to actually talk about, talk to students about suicide. Now, you may notice, it's very interesting. We'll give our administrators a shout-out. This doesn't surprise me, but there was not a single administrator who said that they never asked this question in a given year. That's, that's really, that our, the administrators, the school leadership in these buildings are so passionate about their kids and very passionate about suicide prevention and meeting kids where they are, even if that is with this very difficult topic of suicide. There is 16% of our mental health staff who actually report never asking students this question. The majority of them are actually nurses and nurses aides. And when we did interviews with nurses, they actually, that is a part of their professional capacities, is to do, have these conversations with kids, to do suicide screeners. They need the training, just like school counselors and school psychologists, but they actually kind of want to be put in the game a little bit more. So that's actually a resource we already have in school buildings, that if we shifted the strategies that we use, we could be more inclusive in them. Sometimes, if a kid starts a conversation about suicide with a nurse, they actually have to at some point take them over to the counselor to do the suicide screener. And that's just a little unfortunate, given their professional capacities. We also wanted to, so, you know, when we figured out that a student is actually potentially thinking about suicide, we then have to advance to doing a suicide risk review. So we asked our mental health staff members how often they're screening students for suicide risk. And you can see that 18% of our mental health staff, which I should have said this, I apologize. It does include our nurses, nurses aides, school psychologists, school counselors, and school social workers and mental health therapists that are in the building. So 18% do this weekly. Over 50% do it monthly. So we're actually having to screen kids in every building with quite a bit of frequency. We explored a lot of demographic differences. We wondered whether people who are older, who are more experienced in their careers, whether people of different race ethnicities, or, I always blink on this, different political orientations, whether conservatives, moderates, or liberals, as well as people from different faith backgrounds engage in this work at different rates. And we found no significant differences. Basically, everybody, almost like regardless of who they are, what kind of person, how they identify, they're all engaging in this work on behalf of our students. And that was actually really across the board. We see, we see, these are broadly shared values in our school system. The one difference we did find was by gender. And we do find that women in our school buildings are doing this mental health work, the suicide prevention work, a little more often than men. That said, I want to be very clear that the majority of men in our school buildings are doing this at least like monthly, if not more often. So that's not nothing, right? That's quite a lot of support that's happening, and it certainly can be incredibly powerful when our coaches, our men teachers, or our men counselors do this work on behalf of students. So of course, we're really interested in what facilitates staff engaging in suicide prevention work broadly defined. And when I say suicide prevention work, I include everything under that umbrella, checking in with a kid about their mental health, all the way up to actually having to do a suicide screener, although only certain kinds of staff do suicide screeners. So when we look at that body of work, one of the things that stands out as being so important to enabling staff to do this work more often is having a clear understanding that this is their job, that this is expected of them. Additionally, I'm always interested in the impact of high-quality suicide prevention training. We found that it has an effect at the margins for teachers, meaning that it encourages teachers who would otherwise never do this work to do it once a year. But it does not have an impact on teachers who are doing this work monthly. It doesn't make them do it, you know, every week. We also found that staff who felt more comfortable and more knowledgeable about mental health topics, and that's not just about suicide, but also things about trauma and how that impacts children and the brain and so on and so forth, that that actually enables staff to engage in this work. We also asked some questions about what might stop staff from asking an extremely distressed student that they encounter in their school building, asking them the question, are you thinking of killing yourself? And one of the beautiful and powerful things that we found is that the most common response was that nothing would stop them. And in fact, actually, often staff would actually write in under other barrier, nothing would stop me, which is wonderful. But that said, we did find some other barriers. And in particular, concerns about legal liability was at the top, at the top of the list as the second most frequent response. And this is going to be a bit of a theme throughout the rest of our presentation that we'll return to. The second set of factors all have to do with knowledge gaps being a barrier, either not having enough knowledge about suicide or mental health or not being comfortable with the topic. But also things like believing that not all extremely distressed kids are suicidal. And here's the thing, that's absolutely true. Not all extremely distressed kids are suicidal. But unfortunately, suicidal kids don't like wear a sign on their forehead that says, I'm suicidal. So if we see someone who is in extreme distress, we need to begin asking those questions and figuring out exactly like where their distress lies and whether we need to, you know, activate other resources. So I don't want that to be a barrier to asking this question. The last one in this box, I would be afraid that asking increases the likelihood of a suicide attempt. So this is actually a myth. This is actually incorrect. But we had 17% of our staff members say that this is a concern that they have. This is a broadly-held concern in American society. They're not alone in this. But we do need to address it, because actually asking this question, research has shown it's safe to ask this question, and it actually increases the safety of that child in part because it starts a conversation that can allow us to connect kids to care. Now, if we're asking a lot of our school staff, is doing this work is not always easy. And I say that as someone who is also a teacher and who has had to talk to her own students about suicide, when I really wanted to talk to them about statistics or whatever class I was teaching at the time, I want to acknowledge that doing this work can be very difficult. And in fact, among teachers, but not among the mental health staff, we did find that on average, teachers who do more suicide prevention work and do more work to support student mental health, they do report higher levels of what's called secondary trauma. And we used a measure of secondary trauma that's specific to high, to school students and school staff. And it looks at things like, you know, you know, are you ruminating about the work you did in the school that day? Could you not sleep? Were you having heart palpitations? Could, you know, is your, were you terribly worried? And you, yeah, et cetera. So I do want to stress that this is an important thing for us to keep in mind and to find ways to better support staff through this work. Our research at this time could not establish a cause-and-effect relationship. We did not ask teachers about what else might be going on in their lives that could be causing stress or trauma. So this is not a cause-and-effect, but it is certainly an association we need to keep in mind. There were other factors that increased the secondary trauma levels in teachers. Worrying about legal liability, again, is a big stressor as our work-life balance issues. Interestingly, having negative attitudes towards mental health work, like believing that it shouldn't be their job to support students' mental health was actually also associated with higher levels of secondary trauma. Thankfully, there were some things that decreased secondary trauma. One of the big ones was actually having faith that district protocols not only would protect staff from legal liability, but that they would actually also support kids. Both of those things actually decreased secondary trauma in teachers. So there are some things that we can do. Additionally, having mental health-relevant knowledge and having social support at work, like people that you can turn to for information and emotional support, is really important. All right, so I get to turn it over to Suck.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'll try to lean into it. That makes me feel a little bit weird, like I'm on a talk show. So, okay, so we have a broad mandate in the community to be doing this work. And regardless of the mandate, this work is being done in the schools. So the question that we have to ask is, how do we do it effectively? And some of the strategies that I'm going to talk about, we observed in the schools. Some were being done already, being done well. Some areas of growth need to be produced there. But we've also observed strategies in the front range and in other places. And there's other people doing research like this. And so a lot of this is a culmination of all that research. The foundation for doing good suicide begins with the whole child educational philosophy. Begins with the whole child educational philosophy. This is something that's already here. So the foundation is already built. The district has adopted this philosophy. All the schools we observed have adopted this philosophy. It just starts with the idea that kids are not just students, but whole humans. They have outside lives, they have emotional distress, home trauma, all sorts of pieces that make them individual, and therefore, individual care plans are sometimes necessary. The second piece is a culture of belonging. Again, this is something we observed, it's in every school. All of the administrators, the district, staff, they're all committed to this. I was here in three of the high schools in 2021 at the beginning of the year, and again in 2022 at the beginning of the year, when the administrators were having their conversations about the goals for the year, connectivity, trusted adults, how do we bring kids in who ordinarily are on the outside, on the margins? How do we make sure that they're in here? And what we have found is that when you create these cultures of belonging, is when you adopt these whole-child educational philosophies, it increases, increases the child's willingness to seek help, which is really what we want. We want them to be able to tell an adult, I need help, because it's hard sometimes to catch the kids who are hiding it really, really well. Now, you may be asking yourselves, why haven't I actually talked about suicide yet? And in part, because when we think about suicide prevention, I think we often think about the kid in crisis, the kid who's really needs processed right immediately, maybe sent to a crisis center, maybe reached out to the parents immediately, these strong signals. But what we're interested in is building systems in schools that catch the weak signals before they become strong signals. So suicide prevention is not just about catching the serious suicide, but doing the work that teachers are doing now, but becoming more intentional about it. Saying thank you to a student, saying that student brightens their day. Kid struggles in math, does, does really well on a quiz, rewarding them with some sort of special things in the classroom to do, right? Just these little things that they're probably doing, but just thinking, oh, I am doing suicide prevention. How can I add to this? How can I expand this? How can I do it deliberately? Some issues that we saw in interviews, in observations, these are probably not surprising things. There are always places where we can improve upon. For instance, there's always kids who are not the ideal students or kids who struggle with academics. They're not the most athletic kids. They're not the most popular kids. And finding ways to continue to be intentional about how we include them is really important. So, for instance, I've observed all sorts of clubs that are created in schools that are designed specifically just to have those kids, Dungeons and Dragons. So the kid doesn't want to do this. They want to do something with the fantasy role play, right? So those things are great. Or in the valley, there's lots of kids who have suffered all sorts of trauma, poverty, food insecurity, home trauma, and just continuing to be very intentional about, how do we do this, right? Making sure that teachers have the trauma response training so they're not apprehensive or uncomfortable with noticing a kid that's in distress. Maybe not stopping the lecture, but just letting them know, I see you. After class, I'll talk to you. And then knowing where to take that kid if the distress is really serious. Of course, philosophies and culture is very important, but we are really interested in system building. Obviously, systems are great because they endure. Principals retire, they move schools. Counselors retire, they move schools. Staff retire. Systems, though, outlast those individuals, and people can come in, and there's something there for them to like take over right away. What we have seen both in the front range in here and what we believe is the best system to harness, because it's already there, it doesn't have to be rebuilt, is the multi-tiered support systems that are there, the MTSS. We think that they can be really, really effective. What we noticed in the valley is there's tremendous variation in how they're implemented, ranging from highly formal and systematic to virtually invisible. And the problem with this sort of variation is that a lot of staff we spoke with didn't know what the MTS did, where it met, when it met, whether it was valuable or not. Could they send a kid there for this or that? If they sent the kid there, what happens? Would they find out that something was actually done for that child? And so we're really pushing leadership to buy into the MTS, to think about how to formalize and standardize it, to make it visible, and to make it very predictable and consistent in how it identifies distress signals, processes those distress signals, and then triages the distress signals, whatever those distress signals might be. In addition to that, we recommend using a system that has academic behavioral engagement as well as mental health and socio-emotional challenges, that is like integrating the whole child into it. Usually, these things are designed just for academics and behavior, but obviously, as we know, sometimes a kid is getting Fs. But it's not just fixing those Fs that's going to fix the child, but getting at the root causes, the things that are maybe underlying and persistent that will help that child succeed academically and also as a human. Including more staff in the process, really, really important. Clear referral processes, really important. And again, improving strategies to prevent information loss. And by this, all we mean is finding those weak signals and not letting those weak signals disappear, right? But rather, three or four weak signals here and there, gathered into one centralized place, becomes a strong signal that the school can then act upon. And maybe we don't ever get to that crisis stage where the, where the school's really stressed out. In addition, we, we noticed that there are communication barriers[1745.10] In addition, we, we noticed that there are communication barriers that are, that are worth noting and just again, being deliberate and intentional about. All the schools know about these things. For instance, we talked to a mother, Juanita, who told us that she'd called a school about her son, she needed to pick him up because he had several appointments. When she called, the person who answered, she said Spanish to them, they sent her to the line that goes to the fluent Spanish speaker, but no one was there, went to the answer machine, she hung up. And, and then she told us, you know, after that, what if there was a crisis in the family? What if I needed an immediate response to this? Now, there's no blame on the person who wasn't there, they may have been going to the bathroom, they may have been having a conversation with somebody else, they may have been translating for somebody else. But the point is, schools need to have more resources when it comes to this, because this is about belongingness too, right? This is about building trust between families and the school. So the families will come to the school because they know the school actually will try to overcome this barrier, no matter how complicated it might be. And just as a, you know, in the, in the report, you could see only, over forty-five percent of mental health staff doubt that their, their personal ability to support the mental health of Spanish-speaking students. Several folks we spoke to told us that sometimes there was a shortage of somebody that could speak fluently, and the child would then have to do the translation, which you can imagine is neither ideal, and in some cases not appropriate or potentially harmful to the child. And again, we're all about just building systems, building trust, you know, thickening that safety net so that kids are not dropping and falling through it. The district's role, we have several things in there, I'm only going to pull out a little tiny bit to bring back this idea of legal liability. Seventy-seven percent of classroom staff, this, these are teachers, paraprofessionals, anybody who's actually in the classrooms, seventy-seven percent agree that the district protocols for supporting suicidal students protect them from legal liability. This is a great number, because that's actually the truth. Following protocols does lead to legal protection. And the problem though, is that there's this blue, dark blue on the right-hand side, over twenty percent actually do not agree with this. So this is an opportunity here to work with mistrust that might exist between the school staff and the district. They might, the, the protocols in the past weren't evidence-based and people might worry that they haven't changed enough, they might not know, right? They not, might not actually have the understanding that this is what to do, and they might want to just pretend, right? Sweep this under the rug, plausible deniability, but that opens them up to liability. So again, this is a really important piece to suicide prevention, is getting those thirty or twenty-three percent on board. Additional district levels, the forms that we use have to be evidence-based, this will also help protect against legal liability. Anna and Jen Daniels have been working on this, and so they're getting closer to the place where we need to be. Clarifying expectations for staff is really, really important. Everyone has to be involved in this, they already are doing the work, right? But what we need is to, to explain to the non-mental health staff what they are doing that's suicide prevention and what they don't have to do. Secretaries and teachers don't have to be heroes, they just have to be trusted adults, friendly human beings, care. The mental health staff have to be the ones that are prepared to give this evidence-based suicide risk reviews, to get that training and to renew that training, to be able to talk to parents and guardians about what the next steps are, and to involve the families in appropriate ways.
So we're big believers, I mean, schools are a part of a broader community, right? And, and they cannot do this work alone. That's incredibly essential. Even though they're so critical to it, we also need to look beyond the school district. So one of the things that we noted, and again, as I said, we'll be taking this to community leaders as well, was that there's limited activities and there's a need for transportation in order to support sort of positive youth development across the Grand Valley. It's also really important to improve access to mental health crisis care. I'm actually extraordinarily excited that since writing this, I found out that there's a new psychiatric ER in town, which is like phenomenal. I mean, that alone honestly brings down my blood pressure a bit, that's just such amazing news. But we also, you know, mental health care, we never have enough of it, we always need more, and it is critical, of course, to suicide prevention. This, there is a suicide hotspot in, in the Grand Valley, and we are doing work directly with that organization to address that to the best of our abilities as well. But it's actually best if we keep that work a bit private because, so that we don't undermine the efficacy. Additionally, one of the things we did find is that there is quite a bit of mental health stigma in the Grand Valley that can make it a little bit difficult sometimes to ask for help. We found that, that good proportions of, of our families and our school staff acknowledge that there are adults who feel afraid to tell others about their mental health issues or who feel embarrassed about having mental health issues, even though this is just unfortunately a part of the human condition. I say unfortunately because I really hate when I don't feel well, or when I feel depressed or anxious. It's, it's very unpleasant, right? But there are just sometimes challenging times that hit us, and so it's helpful if we can just kind of think of this as part of just the human condition. We also found that faith communities across the Grand Valley are incredibly important to people's both well-being, as well as to help seeking when they are finding, when they are having those difficult times. I think this is a beautiful quote from Parent that captures the sentiment that we heard from, from numerous family members as well as school staff members, you know, it's such a wonderful thing to realize how much God loves me and that he wants me to be healthy. So that helps me want to pursue therapy because I want to be my best self, and so on and so forth. We actually found that almost twenty percent of families who had actually experienced a mental health crisis with one of their children had turned to their religious leader for help. So these are very much people who sometimes get called on to do this kind of ministry. And of those people who turned to their faith leader, sixty percent rated that person as very helpful, and no one rated them as not at all helpful. It's also, so this is a, this is kind of a call to action, right? And there are trainings that exist, in fact, Jen Daniels is just a jack-of-all-trades and she can do Soul Shop. So we just really encourage our faith leaders to just recognize this critical role that they are playing, and to make sure that they're ready and able to help families and kids through these sometimes difficult times. And these are just two trainings that are evidence-based and endorsed by the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention and that directly are targeting faith communities. So I'm going to turn now to just talking about some initial recommendations. I will share that, you know, we see this as a conversation, we are not the kind of people who come in with outside recommendations and just like, you know, I think that, you know, that's, this is how we work, school staff and school leaders and you all as the people who are here every single day, you all need to also help us think creatively about how we can use these knowledge and turn them into solutions, both that support our staff as they do this sometimes difficult work, as well as of course, supporting our children in the Grand Valley. So these are some initial recommendations, of course, you know, so one of the things that I love to point out is that school funding is actually a fundamental form of suicide prevention. Schools need resources, and there's no way to do this work well if we don't have sufficient mental health staff in our school buildings. It's important to pay attention to the needs of different schools. You all collect amazing data on what's happening in your school buildings, so you can assess need and then send more resources to, and just make sure that those resources are being maximized, maximized and that they're reaching the kids that need it, need it most. We have been talking all day, I'm sorry. I'm starting to trip over my own tongue. I think it's also, you know, we've said this several times, but I'll just, you know, say it one more time, that I think we need to reframe what suicide prevention is. Suicide prevention can feel really big and scary, but it's so much more than handling kids in crisis. And actually, the schools here, they do a really great job of supporting kids who've been identified as suicidal, connecting them to care, working with families to make sure that that care is targeted to that family and that child's needs. But it's also about these broader things we've been talking about, about, we call this upstream suicide prevention. And basically, because it is so difficult to identify someone when they're at that moment in crisis, there's been this push within suicide prevention to move upstream and just start thinking about, how do we, how do we build relationships that make it easier for kids to seek help from us? How do we just build worlds that are, that make it easier for kids to be happy and healthy? How do we make kids feel cared about, seen and heard? And the beautiful thing about this is that this, this helps every single person think creatively about what they can do in their school building with their kids in their classrooms or in their offices. We do need to clarify expectations with staff with regard to suicide prevention, Seth kind of already went over that really clearly. This is really important, both to make it very clear what we are asking, but what we're not asking. Again, to protect some staff's well-being and enable them to do this work. Oh, and you know what, I'm sorry I didn't say this earlier, but I meant to also say that while doing suicide prevention work can't, is associated with an increase in secondary trauma among our teachers, it is not associated with secondary trauma among our mental health workers. So that also shows us that with some education and training, we may be able to do a better job of helping teachers navigate and understand how to do that work in a way that's emotionally safe for them. We, of course, the district is already working on this, and Jen Daniels is like a national treasure that you all have here, but they should obviously work to ensure that all suicide prevention and post-vention protocols are evidence-based, that they're up to date, and that they're consistent with best practices. That helps us address those concerns around legal liability, which can impact staff well-being as well as their, their willingness to engage in this work. And I'll tell you, it's, it's actually pretty simple and there's some great resources, but basically documenting what you've done, what you learned, and communicating it to parents, that's how you protect a school. A school that has done that has never lost a lawsuit when it comes to suicide prevention. And these are just two resources that, that spell that out in much more detail. It's also really important to, to make sure that staff are trained in mental health and suicide prevention. So one of the things that is not always known is that even the most advanced adolescent psychiatrists or clinical psychologists, like these people with PhDs or MDs, they actually do not necessarily have any training in suicide prevention. That needs to change, obviously, but that's the reality that we're working with today. And that is also true of our school counselors, our school psychologists and social workers. Sometimes they've had this training, they got lucky, sometimes they pursued it on their own, but because we cannot assume that they have it, it's really essential for the school district to make sure that all mental health staff are assist-trained. And assist-training is like, it's basically the, the best evidence-based training that we have, is also at this point, kind of the only training we have that's appropriate for mental health workers specifically about suicide prevention. But it has shown that, it has strategies that are embedded within it that actually help people, in the course of one conversation, help people heal, help people feel better. So it's a very powerful training. And guess what, Jen Daniels is a trainer. So you guys are lucky. So she trained me, actually, that was the first time I got to do an assist-training, was with Jen, because we don't have it in Indiana, it's actually, it's coming, but it's harder to access, so. And then finally, you know, we need to talk and we need to think about staff well-being. Our staff are doing so much for us as a society, for you all as a community, that we need to always be thinking about ways that we can help teachers and school staff, you know, promote their, take care of their own well-being. And of course, these supportive relationships are so powerful, it's already happening in a lot of schools, and so that's just a really nice leverage to think about, how can we facilitate social connections that can help avoid that secondary trauma from sometimes difficult workdays that happen? So just to recap our take-home points, first of all, schools do have a broad mandate from families and staff to do mental health promotion and suicide prevention in our schools. Additionally, schools must do this work, so it's really good that you have this broad mandate, because emotionally distressed and suicidal kids are at school and they're in need of support. It's important, of course, to then have these systems alongside those cultures of belonging that you guys have already been lifting up for years, to make sure that this work is done well and effectively to support our children. Ensuring staff are trained and knowledgeable about mental health as well as trauma, it helps staff's own well-being as well as their ability to help kids. Our school staff work tremendously hard, so we need to always consider their well-being too. And then last but not least, schools cannot do this work alone, they need the support of their broader community, both in terms of critical resources, but also in terms of alternative places for care. There are of course going to be moments when we need to turn to our faith communities, when we need to turn to our mental health, emergency rooms, crisis centers, because that is, that's the kind of work that schools are never, that's going to be kind of beyond the school's mandate. So we're going to stop there, and yeah, we welcome questions, thoughts, concerns, feedback.
So I wanted to inquire as to where some of your statistics came from.
Sure.
Because when I was reading this earlier today, I started digging into the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, and it kind of, it gets kind of willy-nilly because sometimes it'll let you go all the way back till 2004, and then sometimes the system shuts down and it doesn't want to do anything. But from what I was finding from Mesa County from 2004 to 2022, from the ages of ten to fourteen, we had sixteen identified suicides, twelve males, four females, fifteen to eighteen was twenty-one, was seventeen males and four females. And you had made mention that the increase in female victims has risen, is that from...
That's national data.
So national data, okay, so that's not...
The CDC.
...necessarily just Mesa County.
Oh, no, not at all. Yeah, those first were from, were national data.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, one of the things that I noticed when I was looking at those statistics from the 2004 to 2020, is that it appears that our highest suicide rate is thirty-five to forty-four. And so that would be like a parental area. And just from personal experience, when I was a kid, I had three friends that committed suicide, and they had that history in their families. Are we doing any research in our area that shows the correlation from parental suicide to child suicide?
That is such an amazing question and such an important point. So I have done work before, not here in Mesa County, that looks at how, you know, parental suicide can impact kids, and it has a terrible impact. And, and it's also important to realize that, you know, so that is not, I will also say that is not something that we particularly looked at here in the Grand Valley. You know, there's so much to do when it comes to understanding suicide that we, we always had to kind of, you know, hone in. We also did not do that much work on suicide post-vention here specifically, although that is what Seth and I spent the six years prior to coming to Colorado, was just focusing on school post-vention, and then we decided we wanted to do something a little happier and focus on help-seeking and building mental health safety nets in schools so that we can try to get to kids before that. So we do know that, that there are correlations within families, like, but it's, it's also not deterministic, right? So it's important for us to always have a bit of hope and realize that just because a family has weathered a tragedy, doesn't mean it's necessarily going to happen. But it's a very painful experience that basically, you know, changes someone for the rest of their life, just like losing a child to suicide has an incredibly profound impact on a, on a family system as well as a school community. You know, so another thing, reason that I think that really matters is that some of those individuals are going to be, that, that older age range are, are going to be people who are impacted by suicide and who are working in our schools, right? And that could contribute to that secondary trauma that we sometimes see in teachers. And Seth and I are already thinking about our next project because it's never enough, we always need to know more. And we, one of the things we'd like to do, I know we're also a little bit tired, but that's okay, we have a lot of writing to do, but, you know, but we really care about kids and communities and doing a better job in, for, for them. And one of the things we would like to do is actually to collect longitudinal survey data so that we could begin to understand some of the complexities in these relationships and begin to suss out cause and effect, and, and what are some of those broader things that are happening in people's lives that, that makes it tough. But thank you for bringing that up, because that's, it's, it's so important to consider how loss impacts families, kids, and our broader community.
So one other thing I wanted to bring up was that there was a, there was a comment in here about lack of transportation for kids for certain. So just to kind of give an idea, we do have the Grand Valley Transportation System, and parents can get into that, they, it's in Spanish, it's in English, they can fill out a form, and as long as they have their student ID, then students can use that along with a pass, and then they can receive transportation throughout, throughout the city. So that is a really good program that we have here in, in the Grand Valley for our students. And it's for all students, as long as parents are comfortable with them traveling by themselves and they have that student ID, then they can, they can access that program.
You know, sometimes it's just about making sure that communities know about some of the resources that are here, and honestly, I love it when, when that's the solution, right? It's just sharing out information, like, that's fantastic. So thank you.
So was, were there, sorry, I have a lot of questions. Were the, was there also any correlation in this as far as how social media is affecting our children?
Yeah, so social media is a complex beast. We did not do any work here on social media, but I can tell you about the broader literature and, and folks who are working in that. So there is, for some kids, there's a very harmful relationship between social media and their mental health. There's a variety of things that can go terribly wrong when kids are on social media, especially like completely unsupervised or, or where families are, are not talking to them about being critical consumers. One of the things that can happen is that can really amplify social comparisons and distress related to comparing yourself to these like picture-perfect images that people present on social media that are often with filters or so on and so forth. So that's one way that social media can be harmful. It also can be sometimes hard to see people doing all the things, you never kind of can escape adolescent society, whereas like when we were in high school, like you just went home, and no one knew what you were doing, you know? They'd have to call you on the landline, your parents would answer, you know, and just the world... And just the world is really different. So kids kind of never get a break from that, that, you know, adolescent culture that's happening in schools unless they deliberately make that choice to step away. That said, there also are some ways that social media is actually helpful. And it really is not all bad or all good. Some kids, especially some kids with disabilities, like autism, can find it easier to make friends online and they can find communities whereas in the real, in the real world, it may be a little bit alienated and isolated. And, and so that can be really meaningful for kids. The, the third thing that can happen that is really not good is that kids can be exposed to content that is just, I don't want to see it, right? Like, and I'm a, I'm an adult. There's certain things that I just don't think children should see. And they, they sometimes click on things and they don't understand what they're about to see. And, and that can cause some like pretty serious distress, right? So, you know, social media is here to stay. Am I completely enthusiastic about it? No. But there are some benefits. There are definitely reasons to be concerned. And actually, we haven't even, I, I should, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that, you know, cell phone use way into the, the night disrupts sleep, which is actually a very serious risk factor for suicide. So like, one of my things that I recommend to like my friends who are parents is just like, make sure your child is not bringing their phone to their bedroom. Like, get them an old-fashioned alarm clock because you can't control whether they're, you know, watching something at 2:00 AM and that is just not, we know that looking at screens disrupts our sleep, right? So we need to be really conscientious about things like that, too.
I have one more question and then I promise you I'll shut up.
I like engagement.
So just when I was reading through this, something that kind of caught my attention is, and it might just be easier for me to quote it. And so it's while we recognize the confidentiality is not always possible, two key solutions to the problem that our school staff should be clear about what can and cannot be confidential before a student shares anything and obtain permission from the youth before disclosing any information to their parents. So I guess when I think about that, so mind you, I was school security. And, you know, I have kids that come in and my thought process, sometimes when I realize that the parent's not the problem, you know, that these children are experiencing these social and emotional situations that aren't necessarily related to home, a lot of it's school. I guess my question is, uh, how do we vet that? Like, how do we, how do we train our teachers? How do we train our staff to, our staff to vet what that is? And what does that look like just from this, this statement? Because, you know, as, as often as I possibly could, I would involve parents. And, and there was no like clear and concise guideline for when you cut that off and when you don't cut that off. And so I guess, um, I need, I feel like, just with that statement there, like, can you provide clarity to that?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and let me be clear that, I mean, it's actually, it's often very important to involve parents. Like, that's part of school's responsibility. So like, we're definitely not advocating to try to avoid that. But if a kid has like a small conflict between years, it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily, you know, I mean, it is really difficult, right? So like, what, and, and when we, I'm like, you know, I don't like that sentence, actually. I'd like to rewrite that because I feel like we've been talking about that like with a little bit more nuance all week. And so the thing, the thing, and when we, we don't ask kids permission to talk to their parents, but we try to involve them in that decision, right? And I'm like, I hope no kids are listening. But it's sort of like, if you give kids a set of choices, even if they all involve telling parents, but you're sort of like, okay, you know what? Let's call your parent together. I'd be happy to be the person to talk to your parent, but I really want you to be in the room so you hear what I say and you understand what's happening. But if actually, if you want to be the one to call your parent and you talk to your parent and I just sit here and listen, that's okay too. Or if you just want me to call your parent privately, that's also okay. And actually, like kids that we've interviewed, if you do that, they actually feel so empowered and they feel really cared for because the school staff members like responding to them as an individual with rights, with a right to, you know, to, to share. But all of those choices involve the fact that we are going to call your parents, right? Where you draw that line about what kinds of things have to be talked about and how do you do that disclosure ahead of time? Like, look, I've, in my, my own, like, I'm a professor, I have my own students. Yeah, there's sometimes when a conversation starts slipping and I'm like, ooh, I need to remind this person. I'm a mandatory reporter and if we go too far down a certain topic, I'm going to do a suicide screener and we're going to possibly call crisis counseling. And I think these, this is real work that I have to do for my own students. You know, yeah, it can be hard to figure out when you're just chatting and then when all of a sudden things start to slip. And I, I just try my best to walk that line. A lot of the counselors are very talented at this and are very adept at, at making that shift in a conversation, at giving kids those structured choices so they feel empowered and they feel cared about, but we're still calling parents. So that's, that's, um, I wish we'd written that a little bit better. And, you know, yeah, so thanks for pointing that out. And I think we might, it might be a good idea for us to edit that before we, you know, because, because it is really important to be clear about that. I will say that all of your counselors and folks who are doing this work are very clear about this. This is part of their professional training. It's part of their, you know, the expectations of their profession.
Yeah, I guess just as a layman, you know, when I read that, like not being, you know, tr- trained, well, I mean, I guess I was to an extent from law enforcement and security, but just reading that and not being a counselor or, you know, a psychiatrist or a psychologist, I'm like, ooh, that just, it made me feel, just to be honest with you, when I read it, I'm like, oh, well, that's making me say like, hey, just be careful so you know. And then what if they don't disclose? And then something, and then they go home and they hurt themselves. So that's what my thought process was with that statement. And I don't know who else might read that, that's not in the profession, that does clearly understand it.
So I appreciate he's taken notes, which I like. You know, so another thing to be aware of is that, you know, when school counselors and school mental health staff are perceived as breaking confidentiality, like all of the time and without this sort of supportive collaborative way of doing it, it does shut down kids' willingness to talk to them. And that is something that we did see in some school buildings. So we do need to be concerned about, about doing this in a supportive and collaborative way. I think it's not, it's, you know, but it's really interesting. Like, it really is about how you talk to kids and how you, especially with teenagers. You know, you have to be like really respectful because they are, like, their developmental stages, they are trying to become independent adults. And we know that they still have a ways to go. But if we tell them that, we're going to be crushing them when we want to be lifting them up and encouraging them forward towards that next stage of like early adulthood where they continue to pursue and develop their independence. So we have to do this with a lot of care and concern. And, and I do think it's important to make sure that our mental health staff are aware that collaboration and, and not being punitive, not shutting down conversations, but also being true and, and honoring, you know, the reality of what it means to work in schools, which does mean disclosing things to parents. Thanks for pointing that out. I really appreciate that.
Few things. One, the transportation, we do have that, but it takes forever to get anywhere. That has to be noted. And then you, like, if you live in Clifton, you have to go across a highway and then move around and finally get to the trans, through the station place, get that, go someplace else, wait again, and you may wait for another hour before you get there. So that, it isn't the best method of being able to get somewhere. You're going to take a couple, you could take like half a day just to go see a therapist and then come back.
Okay.
The parts that I saw was, um, when we look at secondary trauma, where's the teacher's going to go for secondary trauma, where they're going to go to get help? Because I don't see counselors, principals, vice principals being able to handle that secondary trauma that that teacher may have went through. And you can't tell the teacher, we'll wait till after school and then you go. Because they might have heard something really horrifying and they need help then. So that's a concern of mine. The other part is in Mesa County, we have very few, and I mean, like, I don't even know if we have one, a therapist that speaks another language besides English. So there's an issue there. Then we have a problem with therapists doing therapy that is not culturally proficient with working with a family. So that's an issue. So where do families go then? Where they're going to go, if, okay, you don't speak, you don't speak the language or you don't know my culture, so you may say something that's not a good way to do that. So we have that. There's, in here, there's, doesn't talk about historical trauma that our kids go through, that we may, they may see something and, or read something and get that, that trauma. And then how do teachers recognize that? And then how do they handle that trauma there? So I think there's those layers that, when you're doing training, that you have to do. And then my concern is, uh, training for teachers, when will they have time? Time I'm really concerned about is then is, if they're going, they're going to have to go to training, is the principals willing to quit having so many meetings with them so that they could actually go to training and still do the work that they need to do? So those are barriers that I see that doing it, I like the idea. I just don't know how that's going to get all done. I like to see it get done. But I do know as, I've seen people that were, when I was a parole officer, go through secondary trauma and they can be like most law enforcement, we just eat it and just goes away, you know, it doesn't ever go away, but we just take it. Teachers aren't that way. And so how are they going to deal with that? They just, I see a lot of harm coming, so.
Yeah.
I don't know how to do that.
Those are all wonderful and very important points. And, you know, just to validate a lot of what you said, like within suicide prevention and mental health work, we're definitely recognizing the deep need for, for, you know, therapists that can work in other languages other than English as well as being culturally, uh, doing culturally relevant care. I mean, it's just absolutely fundamental. You know, I, I was just telling Seth this evening that we needed to do a literature review about telehealth because that is a big emerging field. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I see my therapist through telehealth. And I, it works great for me, but, but it would be interesting to actually review the literature of, of how effective that is because especially for our more rural communities, it's really important to, you know, like where I live as well, there are Spanish speakers and I work with some of them in my home community and it is a very big concern, like how do we help get, you know, get mental health resources that, that work for them, that are accessible and that are, that are, that honor their own traditions and experiences? So that's, that's really important to think about. I, you know, it's, it's very hard because these are big structural problems that many communities around the United States are experiencing. So I just kind of can't help but kind of hope that telehealth might help us get there. And so I do think we'll be doing a little review, looking into that. And I'm always happy to share information back when I, when I gather it to see how, you know, effective that is and whether that's a possible solution we could think about. I will share, I'm, I'm also deeply concerned about our school staff. I'm very aware, you know, I've said this to like many people over the course of this week that I could basically never get to a school before the school counselors got there and I had to leave before they left. Like, they would be there before seven and by like 4:30, I was like, I gotta go. I'm so tired. How are you still going? So these, these people are very inspiring, but, but I'm concerned about, you know, their own longevity and, and burnout and so on and so forth. I, I can also share with you that our school counselors are often supporting school staff in the building, not just with problem solving, but actually with staff's own emotional well-being. I, I saw that time and time again. And it's like both beautiful, but it's also kind of expanding their professional role. And that, that's difficult. So I don't know, you're raising really good points and, and that's, I think, also why this has to be like an all-hands-on-deck situation.
I also like the part that you talked about how schools have to be welcoming.
Yeah.
What I see when I walk through schools forever, they're not welcoming culturally. There'll be like a nice couch, flowers, all that, but culturally it isn't there. You don't see anything regarding marginalized groups. You don't see anything about people that are handicapped, those type of things. And I think if you're going to have a, a school that's going to be welcoming, it should be welcoming and show everything of the whole community, should show part of that community. And I don't think our, within our school district, when I walk through schools, I do not see that.
Yeah.
And I, that's something that we have to sort of change.
Absolutely. I, you know, I'll, I'll just share one experience I had this morning because I, I stopped and took a picture of it. And it was, you know, these iMatter campaigns. And there was just, it was just really beautiful because there was one in English and one in Spanish, like very prominently placed in a school, in a, in a counseling office in a school building that does have a lot of Spanish-speaking families as well as Spanish-speaking kids. And, and you're right, like, it struck me and it was beautiful. And it was, it's relatively easy to do, it's a relatively easy way to communicate. You, you matter. We're, we're communicating with you in your language. Also, you know, secretaries, being able to connect with all kinds of families that walk into the school building, I'll tell you, secretaries, I, I've always had a deep, deep respect for secretaries. But after watching how they support our kids and, and the families in these buildings, it's, it, they are really powerful individuals within these school buildings. And, you know, in one school, uh, where I, where I spent a lot of time, the, the first person, two of the people who answered the phones were, were fluent in both English and Spanish. And those were the two languages that dominated in the school. And it was just so nice to see that when someone called or walked in the front door, they would always start in English, but the second Spanish came out of the person's mouth, they just switched to Spanish and it was so seamless. And I know that that's not possible in all school buildings. But it, but I'm telling you, you've got, you guys have some schools that are doing the work and doing it really well. And, and that gives me a lot of hope, right? We have models out there in this district that, that can help guide us towards better ways to make all families feel included. And in fact, actually, their survey data was way better than other schools, including schools that had really high rates of Spanish-speaking families and students, but that didn't have that same, you know, depths of people who speak Spanish in the school building. Yeah, absolutely.
So both Director Evanson and Director Chavez both brought up points that I had, had brought up concerns. But you meant two things. You mentioned that the MTSS was kind of executed differently in the schools. And not that we need to name any of that here, but do you have that information that you can provide to the district so we know which schools we might need to support more deeply? So we have continuity with what the, what we need to do when it comes to the multi-tier, you know, systems and supports? You guys have those notes as far as like, okay?
Yeah, we do. I'll also say that some of those schools have actually made like really impressive changes just since last year, which was amazing to see when we went back and, and shared out our findings and then heard some of the changes that they made. So that's really, really cool. And, I mean, one school that I was observing in for two years, just over the course of one year, they caught on to like what a different building was doing and they revolutionized their MTSS and it was a great thing. I think the, the only thing, just to return to what Director Chavez said was, is just that finding time and making sure we protect time for that collaborative problem solving for students in school buildings. You know, there, we've, we've collected our own data as well as, we actually wrote some survey questions that then got integrated into the Teaching and Learning Context of Colorado Survey, the TLCC. And we can actually see in some of our schools that have really strong MTSS systems that serve kids' social, emotional needs as well as their academic needs, that actually helps teachers do their work better. Like, that's how teachers feel. They're like, it's more work, but it actually helps me achieve my goals in the classroom and I feel like our students are better supported. So there can be this time investment into MTSS within the school day and I know how, you know, time is like the ultimate gold, right? In our, in our school system. But I do think the investment is worth it, though I also just recognize that there are just certain barriers that can be really hard to, to move around.
And I, I, oh, God. I, I would add to that, that we heard from several schools when we were here that that early release on Friday that used to be in place, that was the time where they were running these MTSS. So one of the things that we've found is that when there's a single MTSS team, they're processing 1,300, 1,400 kids in the high schools. So when they break down into smaller teams, so each counselor has an alphabet, they're, you know, they're maximizing more staff and they're really doing this collaborative work. But now they don't have that, that early release. And so they've lost some of that time. So then the question is, well, do they make people come at 7:00 AM? But then there's these other meetings, ILTs, OLTs that are happening at that time. And so I don't know, I don't know how all of that works. And, you know, but it's just one of the things that we heard while we were here, both in the past and then of course, when we were delivering the report in the last couple of days.
Just to clarify, I think it was that they were hoping they would get early release, but they didn't have it, but that they're but they didn't have it, but that there was also a change in the amount of planning hours that teachers get. I think that was the, yeah.
Yeah.
We, we got a deluge of updates this week, so.
A lot has changed, even I think since you guys had started this, so that's great to hear. And I think part of it, you know, we are a large system, we are the largest employer in Mesa County. And so, you, we do have a lot of moving parts and I think the staff is doing a really good job of trying to get more continuity just across the board. And, and like you said, schools leaning on other schools that are doing it really well and they don't necessarily have to recreate the will, but they can just say, hey, how are you doing this? And so, I, I see that across the board in a lot of different departments. The other question I have, so as I started reading this, I think one thing that really came out to me, and I'm glad you brought it up, was the faith communities because I know for kids, even though they spend a majority of their time at school, there's always that, what do I do when I'm not at school? And then you have those additional supports of, of sometimes other peers who you don't go to school with, right? And so it kind of changes things up for them. I know that was really important to me, growing up. So, my question is, when we're talking about working with a community, is it them working in their own silo or are we trying to bring, and this might be more of a question for Jen and her team, but are we working with bringing the faith community in if, if a child or a family has a faith community, like, let's say they have a youth pastor or something? But then they, do they then work with the counselors? And I know obviously there's probably confidentiality there, but if this, if the student, the family wanted that, it seems like if we got everybody on the same page versus, well, only the youth pastor knows about it or only the counselor knows about it or different things like that, now all of a sudden we have a full wraparound of supports around a student. And maybe it's not even a faith community, maybe it's just some, another social club or something that the kids do. I know faith communities are important. I think the, the church I attend actually has done some of the, the soul, what's it called? Anyways, yes, the soul shop, thank you. Because they do see that and a lot of times kids will come and, and speak to them about it. So, I guess in a long-winded way is, are we looking at ways where we're not just operating in each of our individual silos, but we're really trying to work collaboratively as a community, you know, coming around these families and these students?
I love that question. You know, I'll, I'll say first of all that in my opinion and, and based on research, the more information we can have flowing between different people who care about these kids or in, and are engaged in supporting these kids, the better. Of course, at that point, it really is the, the parents have a lot of power and, or the legal guardians to decide what gets shared about their child. And I would probably also defer, I'm always very quick to defer to cer, on certain issues to the, the lawyers, right? Because they're the ones who really understand the nuance of confidentiality. But, but I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't, yes, it's a great idea to share as much information as families feel comfortable and, and, again, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, so I should probably be careful, but I think that's something that's like worth exploring, whether there are ways in which you can have information shared. I mean, pediatricians can share information with the school and that can be tremendously powerful for supporting families and, and counselors and kids, right? The same thing between if a kid has been hospitalized, it's incredibly important to have ways to make sure that that information gets back to the school. But again, the parents have a right to control that information about their child. And sometimes that can be frustrating. I, I, not necessarily in this community, but I have worked, we, we did work in a, in several other communities, but I'm thinking of Poplar Grove, where we were working on suicide loss more than suicide prevention. And, you know, it, man, it was just really heartbreaking sometimes when the information wasn't shared and so supports were not wrapped around a kid who really needed that care.
Yeah. I just wonder if, you know, and I'm sure we're doing this, you know, just as, as, you know, if a student is confiding in, you know, a staff, we have a, you know, the district or, you know, or a counselor, you know, and then the parents are brought in, you know, then there's an encouragement to the parents to just say, you know, what other communities are you a part of? And, you know, and then just, sometimes you have to give people sort of the idea or their permission to say, because I, I could only imagine as a parent, and I've dealt with different things with my own children, sometimes when you're in the midst of it, you're not, when the emotion is high, you're not thinking very clearly about what next steps I need to take, right? And so, because you're a little bit in survival mode, because you're, you're afraid. And so, I think sometimes if we just remind parents, hey, you know, if you have this other community, you might want to share with them, so, or encourage the student, because I know, again, having teenagers of my own, as much as sometimes I like to just lay down the law, the other time, it's, they do want to be collaborated with, they want to, they want to have a conversation. And so, telling them to say, this is yours to share and I would really encourage you to share this with, with so-and-so. I, I just wonder if there's a way we can just kind of encourage parents to, to maybe, that they could go and then tell other people in their communities so that those kids can be wrapped around. Because I know that's been a huge help to me, because we all know with, with kids that you can tell, you can tell them something many, many times, but once it's someone else outside of a, outside of mom or dad or, or whoever's raising them, then they're like, they think it's the best idea, so.
No.
And, and again, it's just, and we are a great community here and I know that we, we all like to work together and so I, I just, I think, I could see a lot of people wanting to come together on this, so. And that answers it, I just wanted to make sure we weren't working too much in silos, but that we were trying to really work together as a community. And I know Jen and our, you know, Mesa County and, and many others are, are working on trying to bring all of those, those people to the table so that we can do that.
Yeah, I, I fully support that.
Any other questions? Well, great, thank you for the information and thank you for the work that you did on this, it's really great, so appreciate your time and for you guys being here, so.
Well, we really appreciate the opportunity to come and share with you. Thank you very much for making the time and I know there was a little bit of accommodating our schedule so that we could be here in person.
It worked out.
So, we're really grateful.
And, yeah, the only thing I want to add is this, you said at the beginning, this is a, it's a conversation. And so I think that's, you know, we have some of our staff here that have been in conversation this whole time with Dr. Mueller and her team and so we'll continue to do that as well. I know Dan and his team have a whole plan for how they're going to try and take the information from this report and put things into action, so we do appreciate years of work that y'all have done in our community and how you're partnering with our, with our staff, so we appreciate that.
And, you know, one of the things that, that we do is when we work with a community, we never go away. We are just basically, Seth keeps saying, until we die, we're pro bono consult, or he says, until we lose our minds, which I was like, oh. Like, if we become senile, well, then we may be of no use. But, but actually, we're always available for anything you need. I mean, I've had principals on a day of a suicide loss reach out to me and ask me to be on call to review everything that they're sending out, any idiosyncratic weird decisions they have to make. I've had folks in this community as well as other communities just ask me, can you tell me what the state of the literature is on this, you know, thing? And, and we, we just, we do it. So that's, you know, the investment, the gift that you guys gave, gave us, gave, you know, the school staff, but also schools around the United States is, is really profound and, and we're, we're incredibly grateful, not only to have been able to spend time in this incredibly beautiful place, but also to have had this opportunity to learn so much. So we take that really seriously and, and are deeply appreciative for the opportunity.
All right, board, we have time for some open board discussion. If any, I know.
Jones is like, oh.
Yeah.
I just meant I didn't have anything, I'm sorry. Just meant I didn't have nothing.
The one thing, I think, we might need to come back and talk about this and maybe with, I think we have some shorter work sessions coming up, I'm not sure. But, once George puts some of this work together, because Jose Luis was just talking about kind of goals, you know, so I think once maybe we, and I think George encouraged us too to talk about the norms and the goals, you know, I think I was the one who said we, I want to be nationally the best. I was shooting big. I was like, let's just, let's just shoot for the, shoot for the stars, yeah, right? Let's big, so. You know, so just maybe different things that maybe we each individually want to share about something that we, we would like to see, goals that we have. I don't know if you guys want to share something now or if you want to wait till we have some of the stuff back from George and we can talk about it at like a work session?
I was waiting till we could everything kind of together and.
Have it all back in a nice packet?
We can do it all and get it done.
Okay. Sounds good.
Well, it struck me, as I was writing notes, off to the left of your agendas, it has a board purpose, essential board roles and board col, board's core driving values. I don't know when those were created. It was prior to even, I mean, I think they've been the same ones since forever, so it would be kind of, I mean, I realize that's small, but what's on our website is this stuff, it's old, so we could have it all updated and pretty clear with what y'all come up with. We can start putting that out to the community around.
Yeah, because I think like we could change, like, we could put our norms on there, just maybe kind of make some more things a little bit more succinct, so. Yeah, and even a couple of us can kind of work on some of that and then get it back to the board to, to bring back, so. I know, and we didn't have to share some sort of incredibly embarrassing fact about ourselves or something like we had to do last time, which, so you two got off, but we might still have to have you tell us something that.
I would, yeah, I would just make.
And just made it up. I know. I was trying to, well, I thought Alex was going to do an icebreaker thing, so I was walking in trying to think about like, oh gosh, what's something I got to say? Yeah, so. All right, well, thank you everybody for your time this evening. Thank you, Amy, thank you, Dr. Hill, for being here. And that was a robust amount of information, but it was really good, so. Thank you, gentlemen, for your security, so. Thank you, Angela, for the enchiladas.